Conflict of interest with any of the hearings this evening, they should disqualify or recuse themselves at this time.
I just would like to, for reference, I do not have a declaration of a conflict of interest, but I have done business with Counselor Reister previously.
So noted.
I too need to note that I do not have a conflict of interest, but I've had a past work in relationship with Kevin Van Kennel.
Okay, we've got these. Get those Patty?
Yes.
Okay. All right, next up is our first call to the public. This call to the public is for anything that's not on our agenda this evening. So if you have something that you'd like to talk about, that we're not talking about in this agenda, please step forward at this time. Seeing none, we'll close the first call to the public and we'll head to open public hearing number one. Consideration of a PUD agreement, environmental impact assessment, final PUD plan to construct a 55-unit, single-family site condominium development located in a northwest corner of Chalice Road and Bauer Road. The project includes the following parcels: 4711, 23, 400, 008, 007, 001, and 4711, 23, 300, 003. The request is submitted by Polty Homes of Michigan. And you're on.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Am I on? Yeah, okay, I'm on, good. Good evening. We're happy to be back tonight. I do have a couple of slides. Let's see if I can make it work.
Well, helps if I turn those on. I think they were on before. I turned everything else on. Put that.
Perfect, perfect. I just have a couple short slides tonight. So tonight, we're in front of you for the final PUD site plan. This is our fifth public hearing on this project. We had three at Planning Commission and one at the Township Board, and so this is our fifth one. So tonight, our request is for a recommendation for approval of the final PUD site plan. The recommendation can be made with conditions, and we recognize that you may want to make it conditioned upon issuance of all the outside agency permits. We don't have our Eagle wetland permit yet. And also, of course, satisfaction of all township review comments. There are still, we've done a couple rounds of engineering, but there are still some review comments to clean up. So those would be perfectly acceptable conditions if you support our project to move forward this evening.
Still not working? I wonder if it's dead. Do you want me to scroll forward?
Yeah, next slide, please, thank you. The last couple times we were here, we talked about a lot of topics. I won't be revisiting all of those, except for, to the extent that you want to. Some of the things that we discussed at our prior public hearings were the compliance with the master plan, preservation of the natural features, perimeter tree saves, public benefits. We went at great length into the parallel plan. We talked about grading in minutia in some areas and in general in other areas. Thank you. We talked about traffic at length. We had several revisions of the traffic report. We provided a hydrological study for the wells. We talked at great length about the home styles and provided photos of some of the homes. You can see one of them on this particular slide here. Some of the permits that we need, and of course, the master deed and PUD agreement provisions, restrictions, penalties, remedies. We talked about all of that at great length. The highlight of those meetings were that this plan includes 26 acres of upland preservation, 32 acres of wooded wetland preservation, a extensive buffer planting, which was a mix of preserved trees and new buffer plantings. We doubled the landscaping around the basin at the request of the Planning Commission. And we committed to building an off-site path from the site, actually from Mountain View next door, through the site, through the front entrance of the site, and to the roundabout where the path will tie into the existing path that goes to Hornung and Maltby Schools. Next slide, please.
Oh, it's still not working? Sorry.
That's okay. So, final site plan is basically, so we had unanimous approval, both unanimous recommendation for approval at the Planning Commission and unanimous approval at the Township Board for our preliminary site plan. So final site plan, now that we've done all the engineering, is are we consistent with those preliminary approvals that you've already granted us? I'm happy to report that we are. There's been no change in unit count. We're still at 55 units on 127 acres. That's three units less than permitted by straight zoning under the parallel plan. There's no change to the open space. There's still 74 acres of open space, which is 10 more than the PUD requires for residential PUD. On this particular slide, you can see the big green letters, preservation area. The blue are essentially wetlands. The dark green on the upper left are essentially woodlands or developable areas that we're preserving rather than developing them. And then the lighter green and the yellow are other open spaces, so there will be development in those lighter green areas, like the detention basin, cul-de-sac islands, front entry. And there are some additional protections in the yellow areas where we're saving existing trees to a certain extent and adding more landscape buffering in those areas. So this preservation and open space plan is consistent with the plan that you approved shortly ago. Next slide, please. One of the topics of great concern of both the public and the Commission and the Board, and frankly, the developer for that matter, was trying to preserve as many trees as possible. I know another item on your agenda this evening is a new ordinance for preservation of trees. I think that's wonderful. Trees are an important part of every community. As I mentioned previously, we want to preserve as many trees as possible because they make the sites more attractive to our customers. And of course, as a business enterprise, that makes the sites more valuable. So we're trying to save as many trees as possible. When I was before you, when I was in front of the Board of Trustees, which was the same plan that you recommended for approval, on March 17th, we had on our plan 2,159 trees to be removed. Sounds like a lot of trees, but given that there's over 7,500 trees on that site, we're still in that kind of ranges that you're talking about in your new ordinance. I believe your new ordinance requires that applicants will go in front of the zoning administrator to request permission to cut for anything over 25 percent, and that amount falls roughly around 26, 27 percent of the site. It's really difficult to have a precise number there because we haven't done a tree survey in the preservation area. We only did a tree survey in the development area. There was no point in doing a tree survey in the preservation area because all that area is going to be preserved in its entirety 100 percent. So we have to estimate the number of trees in those areas. However, there were, there was, you asked, we went through at great detail what the grading plan was going to look like, where the trees could be saved, where the trees couldn't be saved, why, and which ones were saved. And one of the charges that you gave us was to do your best to try to save some more. And I predicted that we would, of course, do that, and that if we were able to save some more than what we had on our preliminary, it would be around the perimeter. It would not be on the interior of the site. You can see from this exhibit, the green areas I have highlighted are the areas where we were able to save additional trees above and beyond the plan that you saw previously. So we were able to save an additional 215 trees more than what we had in front of you previously. The bulk was in that northern area. We were able to scale back some of the grading in that area, and that's a very nice wooded area, so that was a great place to do it. And then you can see the rest are just right around the fringes, where we were able to tweak our grading plan, adjust some grades, so that we could try to stay closer to the existing grade at those connection points. Red is where we actually lost more trees. So the maintenance path to the detention pond was one area that we hadn't previously identified, and that's where you see the largest red. And then there's a couple of spots here and there along the perimeter, which were essentially because we were taking a look at various slopes, slope requirements, grading requirements, engineering requirements that we had to meet, and lost a couple of extras. So all in all, an additional 215 trees are being saved on the site. So it is consistent with both your direction and your prior approval. Next slide, please.
Can I just ask a question quickly?
Yes.
So the additional, the green items, the green locations are the additional trees you were able to say you're saving?
Yes ma'am, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And one of the big ticket items that we had, you know, a PUD requires there to be some type of public benefit. There are lots of things that are considered public benefits. In particular, you know, saving a preservation area, an open space area of 74 acres, a preservation area of around 58 acres, I believe it was, that is a benefit. But there was also a physical benefit that was offered and accepted in this particular project, which was the off-site path. So you can see here where the route, the off-site path has been designed. It's going in front of the County Road Commission now for its permits and approvals. These are some of the outside agency permits that we need. We need to get the county's approval to put that path there. But we did talk a lot about the routes. Remember, we initially had wanted to put, or had thought we wanted to put, a path through the preserved areas, as like a nature path. And we discussed at great length with the Commission, the Board, and the public that this would be an option, and overwhelmingly, people came out in favor of this off-site path over the nature path through the preserved area. And so we did go forward with the design of this path. There are essentially three crosswalks, and the path ends at where another crosswalk would be at Mountain View, where the path to continue on further to the west. And you can kind of see on this plan here, where I've highlighted in yellow the existing check dams, the stone check dams, that I thought people would be familiar with. When you drive the road, you can see those, and those are to slow the water in the ditches down. And so you can see where those are. So the path is just north of the check dams, but south of the tree line. So it's out of the low area of that ditch, and it doesn't require any additional clearing, but it does have the three crossings. So we're in the process of working on that permit at this point. I think it'll be a fantastic addition that everybody will be able to enjoy and to be able to get to the schools. That's all I have this evening for kind of an overview refresher on what were some of the promises, and have we kept those promises in the final site plan. Of course, I'm prepared to talk in detail about anything you might want to talk about. There are 10 slides behind this with different areas of interest that we've discussed before. I leave it to the commissioners to guide the conversation. If you want to talk about anything in particular, we're prepared to do that. We hope we can count on your continued support for this project. We're proud of it. We think it's going to be a great project, and we look forward to moving it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian, I'll let Brian tell us what he's got.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Are we on back there? You can hear it through the mics? Okay. Thank you again. Good to see everybody after a month off. It was a bit unusual, but it's nice to see everybody here. We have residents tonight as well. So, down to business. So procedurally, there are three items before commission tonight. Each of those is in front of you for a recommendation to the Township Board. So Board ultimately has the final approval authority over the PUD agreement, the final PUD site plan, as well as the environmental impact assessment. My review letter is broken down into two primary sections, the first of which is related to the road considerations. This project has been presented, really from day one, as a proposal to include private roads as opposed to public. And within the structure of the final PUD slash final condominium plan, we did incorporate review of the private road based on your ordinance, section 15.05 specifically. So I'll start with that, Mr. Chair, and then I'll get into some more details on the plan itself. So as it relates, again, just to the private road at this point, so the first, really the first review standard in your ordinance is whether there are conditions present that warrant consideration of private over public. In this case, we did find and we do believe there are conditions present that do support the use of private roads. And as I mentioned, I think it's important to also reiterate that this project was always presented to Commission and Board as having private roads. The PUD agreement refers to them as such, so there's a lot of verbiage already in place that's addressing this in terms of private as opposed to public. One item that, and I apologize if it is in here, as you all are aware, this was a pretty hefty submittal page-wise. I was unable to find the private road maintenance agreement. That is a requirement of your roads ordinance, again, section 1505. So if it was provided, I apologize. If it was not, that is something that will have to be provided, subject to review by Engineering as well as Township Attorney. In terms of the overall design and construction, those really are deferred over to Shelby through Engineering, as well as Brighton Area Fire Authority, to make sure that all of the very intricate design standards are met with respect to the road itself, and they are far more suited to address those comments than I. And then my closing point on the road is, there's also a requirement that within easement areas, within roadway easement areas, the tree canopy has to be maintained at a minimum height of 15 feet of clearance, such that emergency access apparatus can get through without any issues. The revised plan that was presented did incorporate the clearance requirement, however, it's noted at 13 and a half feet as opposed to the 15 that's required by ordinance. So I would like to see those, the notes, as, and I don't think, there was a detail too, I apologize, there's notes and a detail I want to see cleaned up and have that bumped up to 15, so that we demonstrate full compliance with your ordinance. That's all I have on the road, Mr. Chair. Moving into the final, the final PUD slash final condominium plan, so anytime we go through the condominium process, the second step in the process always includes draft condominium documents, so those being more specifically the master deed and bylaws. Those were provided with this submittal as required. And typically, when we have condo docs, we want to make sure that staff has reviewed them and that the Township Attorney has also reviewed them. So my first comment is merely that I want to make sure the applicant addresses any comments that were put forth by Township staff or the Township Attorney. As petitioner already noted, the wetland crossing will require a permit from Eagle. That is a requirement, but I wanted to make sure that that stayed in the review letter, and that's something that will ultimately have to happen. But again, I wanted to make sure we reiterated that particular point, that outside agency permits will still be required. The next one is more a question than anything, and I think I got the answer based on the presentation, but the first submittal of the final PUD plan did have both the nature path and the public pathway. The second submittal had only the public pathway, and I just was merely looking for explanation or rationale. And if I'm guessing, and I hate to guess, my guess is it probably was put, both were put in probably by mistake.
That's right.
Yeah. So, because I was, I really liked the idea of both, but I certainly understand. We went through a lot of discussion with Commission as to which was the greater public benefit, and I think we all decided it was the public pathway as opposed to this internal private path. So I'm going to go ahead and cross that one right off my list. Thank you for addressing that. There are some, a very detailed landscape plan. There are a handful of relatively minor inconsistencies between the table of plantings and the plan itself. We'll want to make sure those get corrected if this is going to move forward. I've identified a number of them more specifically in the review letter. The LA on the team can certainly take care of those if this is going to move forward or if it's going to come back to you. We'll make sure that gets addressed. The next one is related to, this is an ordinance provision related to the open space. Now, there are mechanisms from the PUD agreement to the condominium documents and the plans themselves. There's enough language in there, in my opinion already, that the open space areas are going to be preserved in perpetuity. That much is kind of a given. The ordinance also includes this language with respect to the need for a preservation and maintenance plan, and then it specifically includes the quote that I've put in my review letter, which is that the Township can require mechanisms for the long-term funding of open space preservation. This may, would include bonds or other funding mechanisms to ensure long-term maintenance of the open space. That's essentially verbatim out of your ordinance. So again, I feel like the protections are there as part of this approval, and I'm not 100 percent sure what the funding mechanisms would or would not be, but I wanted to make sure I brought that up because it is, it is certainly something that was not provided within the submittal. And if it's something the Township does feel is necessary, I want to make sure that we touch all those bases.
May I ask a question, Chair?
Of course.
I suspect the spirit of that ordinance is to be able to do routine maintenance on open space that also is part of the general common element and has some sort of active components to it.
Function, yeah.
Or soccer field, or the path that we were talking about before. But in this instance, those parts of the open space have been fully removed just for its preservation in its complete natural state. So therefore, it's not necessary, in my opinion, if I understand it correctly.
And that was kind of where my mind was headed, but like I said, I didn't want to gloss over that. I felt we needed to have that conversation because there are specific provisions in the ordinance. But yeah, it's maintaining something that is just to be preserved and untouched. I don't know what the costs are associated with that.
And it'd be preserved by the general common element within the condominium documents.
Right. Yeah, which, again, they are, from the agreement to the condo docs to the plans across the board. But like I said, I felt that that was important enough, I wanted to bring that up. And then, Ms. Chair?
Question.
Oh, yes, sir.
So in my subdivision, I have some neighbors down the road from me that kind of are like these four houses here out on this peninsula, I'll call it. Their house, their backyard goes to Chemtrin there on Grand River Avenue. There's a wetland area back in there, and during heavy rains, it floods. It floods the common area, and it floods their yard. They're out in waste deep water. I'm wondering if this statement says mechanisms for long-term funding of open space, because this is, there's no way to preserve that land when it floods. I don't know. Is this, is this property subject to the same heavy rains where the water's going to creep up? It's going to flood right over the general common elements and flood people's yards? And is that, is that putting the Township or the developer on the hook for some type of maintenance of that open area?
I don't believe so. I'm not sure I'm fully understanding the question, but this is related only to the open space that's being preserved. So the 74-ish acres of the site, this is related to the preservation of that land. Just the open space being preserved is part of the cluster option. So this isn't related to anything around the units. This isn't related to anything that's not dedicated open space, that cannot be developed.
If I may. It doesn't, it doesn't refer to the open space that's to the south of those four units, 13 through 16?
I can't see that.
If I may. So we have four different kinds of open spaces in this particular plan. So there's the preservation or conservation areas. Those are about 50, 55 acres. Those are, don't go in it, don't touch it. It's not a flood plain, but it's preserved wetland, woodlands, preserved in its natural, so there wouldn't really be any maintenance there unless you had, you know, a bunch of trash or something blew out in there, then you'd want to restore it, but otherwise, it's the leave it alone area. Second are open spaces that are in developed open spaces. That would be your detention basin, right? So there would need to be maintenance of the detention basin to clean out the filters, clean out the pond, muck it out from time to time. You know, it's intended to accumulate silt, suspended solids, particles in the water and give it a place to settle out. So that requires maintenance, and that, those required maintenances of those open spaces are prescribed in the master deed and bylaws on how we're going to do that. And then the third type of open space are the open spaces that are on the lots. So they're neither in the preservation area nor in the common elements, but they are on the limited common elements, the lots, if you will. And they have a different set of rules. There are some preserved trees on there, there's some new landscaping on there. So it's a combination to create the buffer that we have created in this site, and they require a combination of things. And one is that the homeowner is permitted to maintain that themselves, but they're not permitted to cut those trees down in that landscape buffer. They are permitted to mow it and to play catch and have a barbecue out there, it's on their lot. They're not permitted to put a shed or above-ground swimming pool or any above-ground improvement in those areas. So each of the different open spaces have slightly different rules to them, and they're all detailed out in the documents that Brian mentioned that he's reviewed. And there is, there is one for the maintenance of the private roads. I know there was a lot of paper going around, but the attorneys have been kind of reviewing those. As far as your other questions about flooding, so this isn't, we're not building in a flood plain, and so we're required to meet all of the Livingston County Drain Commission requirements for stormwater, detention treatment, storage. So our pipe sizing, our detention volume, our slopes on our roads, where the inlets are, those types of things are all mandated by both Genoa Township's subdivision ordinance and the stormwater ordinance for Livingston County. So I guess the short answer to your question is no, I don't expect there to be any problem, particularly from this preservation area, or really any other areas of the site, because we're designing these swales and drainage systems with the appropriate slopes and sizes to take on the stormwater in accordance with the code.
So, I'm sorry, so it does not include the light green areas, the limited common elements? It's just, to me, maybe you have a different understanding, just open space, that's labeled as open space here on the little maps right here behind those units. So if, if what, if what you're telling me is that the developer does not need to provide a mechanism for long-term funding of open space preservation, my concern was that floods? How do you, how do you preserve against a flood, you know?
So there's two different things here. One is, the word preservation throws a wrench into it immediately, right? So there's really not any significant practical requirements for maintenance of a preserved area other than keeping people out, keeping those signs up. If someone knocks a sign down, put the sign back up, type of thing. But there is mechanisms required to maintain the other open spaces that we're talking about, and those are in the condominium docs. The master deed, the bylaws, the easement agreement for use and maintenance of the private roads, and we do have an open space preservation easement as part of the docs, but it wasn't a maintenance plan per se. And so, you know, while the documents say, here's how we're going to fund it, right? All the homeowners are going to pay their HOA dues, we're going to have a budget, we're going to establish the budget, they're going to clean out the ponds periodically, they're going to clean out the storm systems periodically. Those types of things are the funding mechanisms for the HOA to maintain those common open spaces. But as far as a particular separate mechanism for doing something in the preservation area, there really isn't one because there isn't, there hasn't been any designated there really isn't one because there isn't, there hasn't been any designated of what would you like us to do there? You know, prescribed burns, periodic cutting, adding more trees. Like there isn't a, 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 a maintenance plan. It was a preserve it in its natural state was always, was always the, the program for that area. Um, and in fact, the, uh, Pulte's attorney did call me and say, what do you think they have in mind for this? I put a spot in it that's an attachment to the PUD agreement and I attached the conservation easement to that exhibit in that referenced area. And I said, I don't know. I'm not sure what, what's required. And I think, um, Brian has pointed out that it, it may be a carryover from some ordinance requirements. We're happy to comply with it. We already have mechanisms in place to fund all of the things like the long-term maintenance of the roads and of the storm systems and those types of thing. If there's something in particular that you want written into the document, we're more than happy to comply with that.
Uh, you answered, you answered my question when you delineated between the different types of open space.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Excellent.
All right, let's get back to Brian. One, one more.
Those three lots, the question that Commissioner asked, I don't think answered. The township bears no responsibility when those backyards flood, right?
That, that's correct. And, and if you take a look at the grading plan, those are gonna be great lots. They're up on the high ground and their backyards are on the low ground.
Last comment, Mr. Chair, simply noting, make sure that the applicant addresses anything provided by engineering or fire.
What does engineering have to say to that?
So for my review, I did the final site planner review for the engineering. I looked at final drainage and grading and the private road construction planner view. Just general things, it's already been stated multiple times. An Eagle wetland permit will need to be applied for, for when we encroach in the wetland buffers and in the, well, just in the wetlands for Eagle. And then the pathway on Charles Road is gonna be a asphalt pavement. Typically, the township requires, uh, concrete pavement, but because you're tying into an existing pavement, existing asphalt pavement pathway, we have no issue with that on the engineering side. And then I guess, I didn't have a, a comment on it in this letter, but because flooding has been brought up, um, I thought I could talk a little bit about the grading and drainage plan for this site. So, uh, we don't see this a lot. This is kind of a new thing that I have seen. The petitioner has proposed a lot of localized low points where some drainage areas won't actually go to the detention pond. They'll go to these low points, um, where they can slowly infiltrate. And they're kind of keeping natural low points, so they're minimizing impact to trees. Most of the improved site is going to the detention pond, but then like backyards and backs of houses might be going to these low points. They were, they're shown on the plan. They're like these little blue spots. They were designed in a way that should they overflow, they would never go into someone's basement or even near their house. They'll all either overflow into the wetland or they will overflow into, um, actually back into the storm system and then get into the detention pond before they ever get to someone's house. So that was considered for the grading plan by the petitioner. And they made a lot of updates and did a lot of calc's in this set. So that's why that comment, I had some comments about it and it got taken off of my latest letter. Then I just, I have a lot of general comments in my drainage and grading section of my letter. Everything but two comments are really just editorial, things that they can just update in their calc's and it won't impact the plan much. One of the things to note is their detention basin design and infiltration in the site use and assume infiltration rate at six inches an hour. We, uh, following the Drain Commission standards, will require an actual infiltration test to verify that instead of designing the whole system off of, um, assumptions from the PERC tests and stuff. So the Drain Commission has like their own tests that needs to be done. And I believe the petitioner is working on that.
Scheduled for tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah. So once that's provided, that could be like something that I could review later, uh, for the township if this gets approved tonight. Um, and my only other major comment for the drainage and grading is behind lot thirty-one, there's an unlabeled retaining wall. Uh, that should just be called out and more, and the details should be provided. And then we do require that a licensed professional engineer design that retaining wall. And then finally, for the private road, there are some road grades exceeding the six percent minimum that we typically look for. But, um, due to the natural topography of the site being really hilly and needing so much grading to reduce those slopes, we would support the deviation, um, to the higher road slopes. We've done this in a few other communities nearby this PUD. It would just need input from the Brighton Area Fire Authority. And I don't think they have had any comments on it, so I, I don't think it's a concern of theirs. And then just that the right-of-way is not centered, um, on some of the sheets. So this needs to be fixed. And, but that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Now, we do have a letter from the Brighton Area Fire Authority, um, indicating, uh, thorough design and fifteen thousand gallon tanks. I guess they're having, okay, supply tanks, uh, was received after the submittal. Tank meets the requirements of PAFA standards. However, suction points originate, uh, has not, they have not been finalized. And a twelve-by-eighteen durable reflective sign will be put at, at the border of those, uh, installation of those tanks, indicating the va, the volume of the, the water within. And a sign shall also indicate the universal draft suction system. Talks about examples. Other than that, it looks like you've met everything that they needed. And, uh, I think that all has to happen before that you put a shovel in the ground, right?
Before the what?
The, that fifteen thousand gallon tank, uh, has to be in there before you start putting anything else on.
That's correct. So it, well, not before anything else, but before we can get, uh, building permits.
Lumber.
That has to be installed, right?
All right.
Mr. Chair, the, the letter from the Brighton Area Fire, Fire Authority dated August fourth references fifty-eight residential units. I believe it's a different number.
Fifty-five. Fifty-five, yes.
So it should be noted for the record that the, the units that they reference in here should be reflective of what's being submitted.
Thank you, Commissioner, for my query. All right.
Shelby, on item number one, your grading and grading, uh, the last sentence, uh, says, uh, infiltration locations, this should be provided prior to the final site plan approval so that the proposed storm can be reviewed infiltration testing, LDSE. This is happening tomorrow. You're gonna.
The test is, so, um, Shelby's comments, Brian's comments, the fire chief's comments and the, those outside permits that we talked about are all, if you approve this plan, are all gonna be conditions of this plan, um, of, of your approval. So when they get the test results, when we get the, the MDEQ, or sorry, the Eagle permit, they'll, your consultants will confirm that we have satisfied that condition.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I was, I was just asking, do you have to do that? We come back and then approve it after the results, but you're saying on a condition that it's satisfactory.
That's right. So that's why in the opening slide, you know, there are two conditions. One is satisfaction of outside agency permits and the other one is satisfaction of the township consultant's comments. And you've got attorney comments, some small things that just need cleanup, fire guy, all of that.
Um, in the past, Amy's had me review plans sometimes after approval and just before land use permits are issued. So that's kind of how that goes down.
And Brian, if we condition our mo, motions to this, we'll be fine.
Yeah, absolutely. And a reminder too, you're, this is a recommending body on these items too. So the final approval wouldn't come until it gets in front of the board. So some of these, it, it really is up to the, the commission. Some of these sort of cleanup items, um, I think in the past, we've typically required those before it goes to the board. Now, some of the bigger ticket items, the, you know, the outside agency, the Eagle, I don't think we need to, you know, delay for those. Those should be conditions at the board level too. But some of the cleanups, I have a few of the cleanups that Shelby has. In the past, we've typically tried to get the plans as clean as possible before they go to the board. So that would be sort of an interim step here too, if commission puts forth recommendations.
Correct. Thank you. All right. Any other questions from up front?
I have a couple of questions regarding the PUD agreement. If that's acceptable. So these are questions that, from a perspective of what my profession is, I typically would be asking or reviewing. And thank you for addressing some of these items in here regarding fertilizing, you know, trees that you're saving radon. My question is, I know you've done a, um, a tree inventory of the trees that will be staying. What is the fix for denoting that those trees need to stay and an owner cannot cut them down?
So that is prescribed in the, uh, in the PUD agreement and in the master deed. It specifically was a condition that we had to have it in both. There are two different tiers. One is, um, is the extra, um, penalty, if you will. And that's if you violate the conservation easement. So it's five thousand dollars for the first offense and it doubles. Um, that was one of the attorney's comments was there's, there's supposed to be a double for a second offender. Um, and those are the conservation areas with signs. As far as, um, penalties for violation of any of the other regulations, say somebody cuts down a tree that's not in that area, that would fall under the normal HOA recourse. In other words, they would get a notification from the HOA. Theoretically, the, not theoretically, legally, the HOA can lean the property if the homeowner doesn't replace it. But it's not spelled out as specifically as the conservation areas. It just says, you may not do this. You may not do that. And then the remedies and penalties are spelled out more generically for the entire development, for all of its rules.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that. And I did see those, but, um, as you probably are maybe familiar with, people don't always read.
Right.
What's important. So I guess my questions are, is how can you put in front of the general public, especially around the perimeters of those properties that are abutting the subdivision to the west, that those trees should not come down? Because the rest of them, they're just along, you know, the, the southern boundary. They don't really, they don't face anything else. But you still want to make sure that people are aware, you know, if they're signing something, that these trees cannot come down. That one thing, right?
So those, those are in the disclosures, so they, they do get those documents. Those are delineated on those. But here's, here's the issue that I have with, uh, additional signage, say, on the lots themselves. Is that after the first day that you move in and you read the sign and you know it's there, you don't want to look at the sign for the rest of your life. You know it. You're not, you, you bought the lot because of the trees, because of the views. You really don't need this sign when you're trying to, you know, have your backyard, be a living space for your guests and your family and your friends to come over to be, you know, having that authority in your face. They are required at the, um, buffers or at the edge of the wetlands. So we are installing those because that's a different animal. That is a state regulation. You, you cannot do that. Those were gonna have to go there whether or not we were gonna put them there or not. We just didn't think it made sense for, say, those, um, lots that are back-to-back with Mountain View, that halfway through their backyard that they have signage in the middle of their backyard, like, don't go over there. Your lot. There are rules. They're, they're gonna know it. It's gonna be in the disclosures. It's in all of the documents. And so we, we weren't proposing to do any signage on those lots.
I, I ask because I sold a house recently that abutted that. So that was a question that came up frequently. And unless people ask, they don't know. So just from my perspective, I felt like it's important to, to make the general public who's buying those lots very aware that that is something that they need to comply with. The other thing is fertilizers. How, what's the plan to educate the owners on what they, how they cannot fertilize, use a fertilizer for phosphorus for, how are you gonna control that?
Yeah, so again, the, the legal part is taken care of. There, it's not permitted. And the disclosure is taken care of. We've told them. But whether or not somebody uses the wrong fertilizer and what the police, the fertilizer police force looks like and what the remedies are, I, I don't really have a, a, a good answer for that other than, um, it would have to come to somebody's attention. And, and the HOA has remedies available against all of the homeowners. Remember that in any site condo, technically, you don't own your lot. You own all the lots and all the areas. And you have common rights over the common areas and limited rights over the areas for which you control. And so the HOA is, is very powerful in that they do have remedies against that. But to your point, how would, how would you know if you used the wrong fertilizer? You probably wouldn't unless it had some kind of symptom of it. You know, that there would be some kind of, something changed color or somebody suspected or somebody saw you using, pouring your bag into your fertilizer spreader. There really, there really isn't a good mechanism, just like, you know, don't flush this down the toilet. But if somebody does, they do, you know, and it, it affects our sewer plants, you know? Don't, don't throw away old prescriptions down the toilet, you know? But you can't really have a police force for that.
I, I appreciate the intent to, you know, save the environment. It's just the question is, how does that get enforced? Well, it's an important question, yeah. The, the other item is regarding radon tests. Walk me through how that's gonna work.
So, um, the, uh, home buyers are notified when they have a contract that, um, radon exists naturally. And that they have a right to do a radon test and that Pulte will reimburse them for the radon test. And if it comes up positive, then, um, they will install a, I believe it's a passive radon removal system. And.
They, the.
Pulte, Pulte Home. So, so they have, they get a five hundred dollar credit. So Pulte won't actually physically come in and do it. They'll say, here's five hundred dollars. That's what it costs to get this system, put the fan, put on the exhaust that's on the sump pump that is the radon removal system. It's five hundred bucks. Here's your voucher, contract with your water softener person to, to go ahead and put that in. That's, that's how it works. Radon is interesting because, um, you know, I had a, a friend who passed away and his wife moved to the other side of the state. Their house was closed up for a little while and she sold it. She was gonna stay on the other side of the state. And, um, and they failed their radon test. And, you know, it was because nobody lived in the house for, for a year. So we went in, we opened all the windows, we ran all the, the faucets so that the traps got full of water again and everything. And then they came in and they retested it and it passed. So, you know, it's, it's hit and miss. It depends on the, the circumstances. But the mechanism is in place for Pulte to pay for that remediation system should the homeowner choose to make that investigation and also find that it needs a, a fan on the sump pump.
I, I just wanted to know what the, the timing was because you're not supposed to have doors and windows up. And if you're the contractor and you're going in and out, you're not gonna get a correct reading. But it sounds like you're gonna remedy it anyway.
Right.
And that's taken care of after close or before close or?
Um, I don't know if it's before or after close, but, um, as I mentioned, Pulte's not doing the work. So it's probably, um, contemporaneous with the close. It's probably a credit at close. Here's your five hundred dollars. And your contractor need only put a fan on the, the vent pipe coming off of the, the sump pumps.
Okay.
Yeah.
Take you back on that real quick. Yes. Is, I, there's nothing in the master deed that identifies though who's responsible for the maintenance of those units?
Of the, no, it's the homeowner individually, so.
Not outlined in there?
Well, there's a lot of, um, homeowner maintenance that's not outlined in the master deed. The master deed's intended to outline, uh, the, the developer's responsibility. And the developer's responsibility is to pay this specific five hundred dollar credit for the, um, radon removal.
So you're putting it under the, if it's not listed, it's the, it's the co-owner's responsibility section? It falls under there?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a fair representation, yes. I mean, just like the roof maintenance or whatever. So like, this is not a condo. It's a site condo. So there's a slight, slight difference in that, you know, they're responsible to mow their grass and they're responsible to shovel their walk and their.
No, I understand. There's just an argument in the industry on that right now because radon is, can't be ma, can't be stopped.
Right.
And so there's an argument that, that falls as an association responsibility. So, but I think, we, I think the, the industry's done a.
So, but I think, I think the industry's done a pretty good job of just, on an association case-by-case basis, getting legal counsel on that. So, I was just curious if you had that broken out there.
Yeah, no, just the responsibility for the builder to pay for the system.
For upfront?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Last point is your, on page 26 of the planned, of the PUD agreement, it just says planned development agreement.
Mm-hmm.
Should say PUD, planned unit development agreement? Just as a clarification?
I, I, page, mine only has 13.
In my, in our file here, where it says PUD agreement, it says planned development agreement.
Right.
Just referencing if it should say planned unit development.
I think you are correct, yes. It should say planned unit development. And it might be even more technically correct to be our PUD because your ordinance is residential planned unit.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we can absolutely make that.
See, we're near the secretary of those.
Curious about these seven low areas that offer infiltration.
Yes.
That's a newer technique, I believe, for our community, for managing the stormwater. Is, are these protected with any sort of easements? What protect, like, what prevents a unit owner 20 years down the line from looking, yeah, from filling that couple of feet in, right? That's a concern of mine because it doesn't present itself as a traditional stormwater management technique. It's not as obvious.
Yeah.
That's part of the point and technique, but.
That's a great question. If you look at, if you could bring up Amy, number, slide number 10 on my presentation. Okay, so on the right-hand side, you see an end section, which is a storm drain and it's got an easement around it. And you can see the little blue arrow is saying, when that low area overflows, it flows out of that area. So, technically, that particular low area is part of the storm system and it would be very easy for us to draw that easement line that's around the storm pipe itself, around that particular low area. And that's just a matter of drafting.
Yeah. Because this is a newer stormwater management technique, I think that would be wise of us to think through that, along with the 10-foot that you have for your conveyance system, that you're also doing the same for these low areas and treat them like small little detention ponds in that manner. Yeah.
Yeah, I totally agree. There are, there's actually two parts to this program. Both are encouraged by Livingston County Drain Commissioner, by the way. One of them is, are utilizing this low area for storage. And the other is, if you can look on slide number 12, please.
Well, yeah. I'm good with the technique. I just want to make sure we're preserving its ability to stay there.
Yeah, so as we go through and get that Livingston County permit, I'm fairly confident they're going to require us to put those in easements anyway, but we can certainly.
Yeah, I guess to speak on this, I don't, when you go to the Drain Commission now, they'll just be doing a storage or control review since we've already kind of okayed this. But I agree, it should be within an easement. I think that was a comment in my first letter.
Yeah.
But I think having it within an easement would take care of that issue.
Yeah, okay, cool.
When you say easement, I mean, I'm still confused. Me, my backyard floods, I'm getting some topsoil that ain't going to flood on my backyard because, you know what I'm going to do? I'm going to have to re-sod that every year. That's what one of my neighbors does. Six years he's had to re-sod his backyard because of flooding like this. This is the story I was talking about. And me, you know what he's doing? He's considering getting 30 cubic yards of topsoil.
You can't though.
But yeah, that's the easement protects from that.
So, this is going to be an easement in my backyard?
The association's responsible for the yard already.
That's what the conveyance easement's for. There's easements all over this.
Yeah, exactly.
And the easement.
You can't touch the property.
So, you're going to have three.
No, even the property.
You're going to have, you're going to have three easements there. So, in this particular picture, you've got, the storm pipe is in an easement and it's drawn, it's shown. You also have the landscape easement off the back of the lots. And then we're talking about a third easement that says, "You can't fill this in." That's part of the storm system, whether it's coming in or going out. So, you have an example of both on this slide. On the other one, the pipe is going out to that area. It builds up before it spills off to the wetland area. So, they go both ways, on and off the site. And they should be, they are part of the stormwater system. They're reviewed as such. That's what the infiltration tests we were talking about, about how much everything perks into the ground, whether it's six inches per hour or whatever the rate was. I forget what the number was, but that's all part of it. So, it is part of the storm system and as such, it should be in an easement.
I just got to get used to it.
The biggest moment to prevent issues is making sure a buyer is fully aware that that's true about their property.
Right.
So, regardless of what we discussed tonight.
Right.
Fast forward five years, that buyer needs to know that that's true.
Right.
If that doesn't happen, then there's the risk of people being surprised. "I didn't know I couldn't do that" and all those things.
Right.
How low are the low areas?
Just there are a couple of feet. They're not, there's just little depressions and they're infiltration. So, the idea is that it just collects for that heavy storm. It sits there for six or eight hours and in that timeframe, it's infiltrating through.
So, most of them are wooded. They're low areas in the woods. And so, what it allows us to do is usually you have to capture all the water on your site and bring it to the detention basin. So, now I don't have to cut down the woods to put a storm system in a natural low depression to bring it back to my basin, which will drive the system lower to get through. I can leave it there, but I have to demonstrate that it's not going to cause any flooding to the residents and that's what the perk rates are all about.
Does anyone else? All right, I guess at this point, I'd like to take our call to the public. If anyone would like to speak on this issue, please step forward, state your name, your address, and we'll give you a couple of minutes to talk.
Good evening. Deborah Beatty, 3109 Pineview Trail. I like your plan so far. I think you've done real good things because I didn't like it at all before. As to the buffer, the 100-foot buffer that runs on Bauer and Chalice and probably along the railroad track also, I thought from the first meeting, which was approximately a year ago, that we were talking about a 100-foot undisturbed natural buffer. And I think a lot of us were talking like that's what it was going to be. We knew you were going to take out trees everywhere on the home areas. But that, I think, is important to leave as undisturbed, where we could drive by it right now and it would look like a forest, like it does now on both of those roads. I think that also, as Mary Ann was saying, and I was in real estate for a while, and that does make those lots, prime lots, having the wooded areas on there. It also protects whatever wildlife might be remaining when you're done with that. So, I would hope that that is going to be the plan and you're not going to be taking out trees, good trees, just to put in wimpy trees and shrubs. As for the signage, I understand that people don't want to look at signs all the time, but it would seem to me that maybe for the first year that a house is there or for six months, those signs should be, obviously, the wetland signs will stay forever. But the ones that tell people what they can and cannot do on those wooded areas, I think those should go up at the start so that people are aware when they move in. And they'll probably take them down or maybe they can be allowed to take them down or the association could take them down after property's sold so many months later. And I think that applies also to those lowland drainage systems that you were just talking about. I think those should require a sign so that they do stay intact. And the signs may maybe don't have to stay up forever, but at the start of this, when people are just moving in, I think that would be important. But my main concern is for that 100-foot natural buffer and I hope that that is the way we're going to do it. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I'll bring you back up front and ask for any additional discussion.
So, what, that yellow 100-foot, I'm looking at a different map? Well, I'm looking at that map right there, as a matter of fact. So, what is the plan for that? Is that to take down trees and plant something else or leave them intact?
So, can you go to slide four? Thank you. So, you can see on slide four, I cut the plan along the limits of disturbance. So, where you see a photograph of a tree is where there's going to be trees that are saved. Where you see green, those are where I have additional trees that are going to be saved. And we could turn the green off and you'd see the trees underneath there. Everywhere else is getting cleared, just as has always been expressed from the beginning. You have to clear the main entrance because you have to put the driveway in and you have to put the storm system in. And you have to clear the emergency entrance because the emergency entrance needs to go through. There are many reasons. You know, I talked earlier about saving 215 additional trees. If it were just a matter of just drawing an arbitrary line, then we would have done that. But we looked at the grading at each one of those places to be able to have the correct slopes on the roads, the correct drainage away from the houses, the septic fields in the correct places, the right separation to the wells, all of the things that are required into the sub, not just the trees. And so, the answer, as it has been from the first day till now, is that no. That is not going to be all saved natural trees in yellow. That's why it got its own color. And that's why on the prior slides and on the prior shows, that there's a combination of saved trees and new landscaping. If you look at the landscaping and plan included in your package, you'll see that there are extensive trees going in, in those areas. In some cases, it's because there are no trees in those areas. Like the line along Mountain View is sparsely wooded and we're saving most of the trees along there, but it's still pretty wide open. And so, a lot of trees got added there. It was one of the reasons that we doubled up the landscaping around the detention basin, to create a new buffer between the Mountain View residence and there. So, on this particular case, there are a lot of reasons that we have to grade on the site. And we've gone through a lot of time and effort to determine where that line is and to save, you know, over 70% of the trees on the site to do it and still bring to you a 55-unit development that meets all your subdivision.
It looks like the vast majority of the east side, which is Bauer Road, is going to be left untouched and you've got some extra spots there where you're going to preserve some extra trees from this map right here. And then most of the southern portion, up until you get to the main entrance, is going to be left alone, except for the yellow areas. On slide four.
On slide four. So, yeah.
I think Deb, that was your concern, was Bauer Road was.
Lot one, 45 and half of 44 are going to essentially have no trees along Bauer Road, other than the new planted trees you're going to have at the entrance. You're going to have the entrance feature. You're going to have the stormwater management system that we just discussed and saw how the infiltration trench works and all of that. So, through there, there's going to be clearing and grading as a necessity.
Right, for the entrance, yep. And I see for the emergency entrance down there too.
Same thing, the emergency entrance. If you.
But it looks like the, most of Bauer and the vast majority of Chalice right there, you're going to leave the trees as is, right along the roadside.
That's right.
Okay.
So, there's very few places where all the trees go right to the property line. But it varies in width. There isn't, I just don't want to have anybody think that there's going to be a 100-foot line of forest. You can see it's got a jagged tooth through there and we've gone through great pains to figure out exactly where that line is.
So, your Exhibit 2, the tree survey, that delineates that, correct?
Yes, it does.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Question with regard to the septic systems?
Yes, sir.
Excuse my throat. Is there any concern at all with grading? Are there any engineered systems coming in, that type of thing, that might throw a monkey wrench in?
Oh, no. We thought, so out of 55, we thought we might have four or five when we first started this thing. And now, we're down to, we might have one, possibly two. One of the things that my associate, Brian, who's here tonight, he was out today in the heat before the rain and he was digging some more test holes with the septic, with the health department. You know, when we slightly tweak the layout, you've got to have those test holes in your reserve and in your primary fields. And so, as we tweaked the layout, our old holes weren't in the right spot, so we had to go do some more. And we think we're, we think, we don't think we're going to have any engineered fields. We, like I said, we thought we were going to have four when we started this thing. Recently, we've been saying one or two and I think we're probably not going to. The good news is that, you know, that's what we do for a living. We have a septic designer that designs engineered fields. It's one of the 60 engineers that works at our firm. And so, we're able to solve that problem, should there be that problem. But right now, there's a lot of good sand out there. It's really a sandy site. It's, we don't think it's going to be a problem. And we have our preliminary approval from the health department.
And did that happen as a result of pushing some of the, as it was mentioned by, I think, the board asking for like jockeying some so that there's 10-foot, you know, balances so it doesn't look like your straight line?
No. So, that was easy to comply with because we're able to do that naturally. So, we could have, so remember that we have a minimum front setback of 50 feet. And we've designed these so that the bulk of them, the majority of them, can have 75 feet. So, we're able to comply with your restriction, still with septic in the front yard. So, we're not concerned about that restriction whatsoever on those. I mean, it really only applies to the two straights of way because as you're coming around a curve, you have variable setbacks coming around the curve. Yeah, we're 100% positive that we can comply with that requirement.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I'm ready to make a motion.
All right. Go forth.
All right. Before I make my motions, I want to commend the petitioner, the public and this commission. I think, you know, as mentioned, this has been almost a year and I think this is a good example of the process working really well because the result of the conversations over the last year is a site that preserves almost 70 acres of important wetlands and uplands and trees in our community. You've agreed to reduce the number of units going back to several months ago now to be able to do that to an even greater extent. And what's also being offered is a sidewalk in an area of our community that's recently been updated and improved. And I think that will be a really great asset in our community. And so, just really grateful for the conversations over this long haul and I want to make sure that we kind of like, at least bullet point those and capture those and acknowledge those because this has, this conversation, I feel like has created a really great project and benefit to our community. And so.
I agree, thank you.
My recommendations will be for approval on all three of these. So, my first one's this. I'd like to recommend, Mr. Chair, I'd like to recommend the township board approval of the planned unit development agreement for the 55-unit single-family site condominiums with the tax ID codes, as mentioned in public hearing number one, with the following conditions, that the private road maintenance agreement that is required be added to that agreement. That easements for the low areas as part of the infiltration in the stormwater management system are also added to it. That the applicant update the plans to show 15 feet overhead tree clearance and that all pertinent comments from the township engineer, the Brighton Area Fire Department, township. township planner, and Eagle through the state, and of course, Lewis County Drain Commissioner as well, be applied within this manner too.
Discussion? Hearing none. Support?
Hold on. Amy has something.
Can we add staff and attorney, because we're doing the agreement, correct?
Yeah.
Add staff and attorney comments be added to?
Yep. Yep. Township staff and attorney comments must be added to, must be incorporated within the planned unit development as well.
Got that, Patty? All those, oh, we got a second?
I second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. We move on.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to recommend to the township board approval of the environmental impact assessment dated 3/5/2025, as submitted.
Support? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. It passes unanimously. I'll look for recommendation of the final PUD.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to recommend to the township board the final PUD site plan dated July 22, 2025, with the following conditions, that all comments from the township engineer, township planner, Brighton Area Fire Department, Eagle, Lewis County Drain Office, township staff, and the township attorney be incorporated within the approved plans. That the... I think that's it. Am I missing something on the final site plan? The easements, oh, I would like to see the stormwater easements depicted on the plans in the future as well. Infiltration testing is part of the drink office. Brian, did I miss anything on your end?
The general all comments covers me for sure.
Yeah, perfect.
Support?
Hold on. Amy has something. Yep.
Can we also add that the parcels will need to be combined prior to land use permit? We've been running into that.
Yep, yep. So, land combination for all the currently divided parcels needs to be applied for before issuance of a land use permit.
Support?
Yep, no problem.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Congratulations. Passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate all of your consideration and your thoughtful deliberation on this project. Thank you.
All right, next up is public hearing number two. Those that will be leaving at this time, if you wouldn't mind, if you have conversation outside, because we have to leave the door open. All right, public hearing number two. Consideration for a special land use application, site plan and impact assessment for a drive-through restaurant within a multi-tenant commercial building. Property is located at 1111 South Latson Road. It's parcel 4711091043. It's on the east side of Latson Road, south of Grand River Avenue. Request is submitted by Kevin Baham. How bad was the pronunciation of the name?
Good evening. Catherine Reyster here on behalf of the applicant, Kevin Bonham, along with...
Scott Tuziant with Boss Engineering. And I'll keep it pretty quick. This isn't the first time you've seen this project. It's looking really identical, so I'm going to touch up on just a number of different subjects. The first will be going on just a brief history. The second will be just a few of the minor and only changes really on the site plan from the previous approval that was obtained last year. And third, just want to touch up on a few of the items that the planning letter has brought up to your attention for discussion. So, just a brief history, we had received planning commission and township board approval on a project that looked identical to this. Really, the primary difference was that drive-through user was indicated as a coffee user. So, we progressed through the process with that being the user. We actually obtained all of our approvals, including all outside agencies. There's actually even a partial land use permit issued for the site for the intent of doing the necessary infrastructure to support the full, the Mr. Carwash site immediately to the north, primarily getting the full access drive for Mr. Carwash to use. That's nearing completion. So, since then, a particular user has approached the owner. In this case, you know, we've indicated as Chipotle in the response letters. And that user was not, was not an approved use in general commercial. Since then, there has been an ordinance amendment that does allow that use. So, we are back before you with that change in use. So, for item two, just talking about some of the modifications to the plan. I already mentioned the change in use from coffee to a fast food user. Other than that, that particular user does have a few specific requirements for their space. So, the previous submittal that was approved last year, the rear of the fast food or the drive-through space had a square cutout. And in order to just have a little better flow for the interior, they just requested that we angle that. That did add square footage. We actually compensated that by removing some square footage on the south end of the building. So, there has been an overall reduction in square footage of the building by a few hundred feet from the previous submittal. The overall site layout is identical, parking, circulation, et cetera. So, no modifications there. So, in getting into just the number of items that are going to be, that are opening up for discussion in Brian's letter, they were all the same items that existed prior, that we had discussed prior and were part of the approved project prior. So, just to briefly run through those, one of them is the 500-foot spacing requirement between drive-throughs. I believe the panda, and that's not from the drive, the physical drive-through itself, that's from the property. So, panda, the corner of the Panda Express parcel is kitty corner to the southern corner of this parcel. So, we did go through the ZBA process last year and obtained approval on that as well. For the rear yard buffer zone, and Brian has noted, we do meet the planting requirement. However, there is a, we're deficient in both width and full width screen, or full-length screen. So, as far as the width deficiency, we had a lot of conversation about the developability of the parcel. It is a very narrow parcel, and it's got a very narrow building setback. Typical multi-tenant operation like this, you're ideally in that 75 to 80-foot of building depth range. And we're setback to setback at 65. So, we've already sacrificed in that way. And of course, once you start adding up the necessary, you know, fire authority drive aisle widths and per ordinance and the required parking spaces and the front yard setback that's required, there's just, that space isn't there on this particular parcel. That's only about 180 feet in depth. So, we wanted to honor, you know, the intent, and that's to create that buffer. So, we did meet the planting requirements. And the second half of that was the deficiency in the full length of fence. There is a break in the fence immediately behind that middle tenant. That was still the case on that prior approved project. That's because there is an existing evergreen row there, pretty tall evergreen row. And in that prior submittal package last year, we actually did provide just a picture of what that looks like. So, the intent is for that to stay and not take those out because they're, you know, plus or minus a few feet in either property. And they are large, larger diameter as far as the drip line. So, we want to stay away from those, so we provided the fence accordingly. And I will note on the southern edge, there is some grade change down to the parcel. So, we do have an eight-foot fence noted in that section to accommodate that elevation change that's occurring in the yard. And then, just the last few items, as far as additional directional signage on site, again, once the user is locked in, they typically have their own details, what signs they want where, indicating, you know, where the drive-through entrance is, et cetera. So, we acknowledge there will be additional directional signage that we'll also need to go through the township through that process. And the partial escape lane being the last item. So, we have provided an escape lane all the way up to the drive-through order board. So, those, it's really just those last three or four spaces that don't have the escape. And the intent is, well, once you've placed your order, you're not likely to want to escape and leave your food there. So, this is pretty commonplace. It's a practice, you know, we utilize that practice in a lot of locations. And it works for the user. In this particular case, again, Chipotle has expressed intention in the site. And we've slightly modified the space for further specifications. Their intent is to make it a online slash app order pickup lane only, since that's a majority of their business. So, that would be their intent here. So, really, once you get into that, you don't, you don't have the necessity for an escape lane. However, we wanted to also ensure that the site is set up for any future user, you know, a different fast food user that would require a little bit more stacking up to the 10 or would require that order board. So, it is set up for that. But right now, again, we're indicating that Chipotle is interested in the space. So, that being said, I'll pass it off, and we'll be open for discussion after.
Brian?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Scott, for covering half of my comments. So, saved my voice tonight. Okay, procedurally, there's three items before commission tonight, special land use, environmental impact assessment, site plan review. All three of those, because of this is a special land use, those all go through you for recommendation to the township board. So, similar to previous case, any actions you take tonight should be in the form of a recommendation to the board. That being said, I'll start with special land use. So, my overarching comment, generally speaking, our review letter finds that the standards of 1903 are met. Do have a sort of two subsequent comments to that. One is that as it relates to compatibility and impacts, we want to make sure that the use conditions are met to the commission's satisfaction. And as it relates to public facilities, services, infrastructure, want to make sure that any comments from fire authority and engineering have been addressed. With respect to the specific use conditions, so 7.02.02J does provide use conditions specific to drive-through restaurant uses. And Scott's already covered a few of these, but I'm going to go through them hopefully briefly. So, there is a deficiency in the 500-foot spacing, as noted. There is a drive-through restaurant on the opposite side of South Latson that is within 500-foot property line to property line. Under the recently revised zoning ordinance, ultimately township has the ability to waive or modify that spacing requirement. So, as part of your review process, there are a number of conditions that are listed in the ordinance. In this particular case, I believe we are dealing with a shared driveway, which is one of the rationale points that the commission can use to waive or modify the 500-foot spacing. Again, as noted, there are also buffer requirements in this case because we have residential to the rear. In this case, again, the plantings are met, the width is not, and there is a partial screen wall. This is, I did think it was important to at least comment in my summary and in my review letter, the landscape plan is exactly what was previously approved, so they're not skimping on plantings. They've not changed it and further reduced the width of it from what you saw previously. It does match, and you do have the discretion to modify landscape and screening requirements. Again, we'll leave the final details, I guess, to who the end user is. But again, given the number of potential users, given the circulation pattern on site and with the shared drive, I do think that some directional signage is probably going to be needed here. And that's just something that's sort of a general comment. And if it ends up being specific to the ultimate end users, so be it. But I want to make sure that that was out there. And then, with respect to the escape lane, again, there's half of the drive-through lane you can leave. As Scott noted, essentially, when you place your order at the board, if it becomes a full service, then you are, you're locked in by a landscape island. Other than that, you are free to exit the lane prior to that, again, if it ends up being full service. I did think a couple of other things that are at least important to note that I didn't hear Scott say in comparison to the coffee shop that was approved. So, they did update their traffic study, and the proposed change in use actually does reduce the overall trip generation. So, one of the other considerations for the spacing is if it's under, if it's sub 50 trips in the peak hour, I think. This didn't quite hit that, but it is less than what was previously approved in terms of the potential impacts. So, I did think that that was an important point to also bring up for commission's consideration. And then, Mr. Chair, my last points are simply tied back to the site plan, which again, is essentially what was previously approved, save for the minor change to the building in the northeast corner to accommodate the different drive-through and potentially the user for the inside space. So, I just kept in a couple of sort of generic comments, but I think they still hold true. I want to make sure they're discussed because this is technically a new site plan. So, the building materials, the color palette, subject to review and approval by the commission. Though, again, save for the very minor change to that northeast corner of the building, it's essentially what you saw and what the board ultimately approved last time. Same with the buffer zone be required at the rear of the property. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Happy to take any questions, or I'll turn it over to Shelby.
Any questions for Brian? All right, we'll turn it over to Shelby.
Yes, I don't hold a lot, since no significant changes were made to the engineering design of the site. And it will have, the use has similar impact to utilities and traffic. I had no concern with the revised site plan.
Thank you. And the fire authority indicated all previous concerns cited for the project have been addressed. And the fire authority has no further concerns regarding the amended special land use change based on recently submitted documents. So, we're all set with the fire. Are there any questions from the commissioners?
Yeah, one question. Want to make sure I heard you correctly. You mentioned that the drive-through will be used in a manner where it's people receiving their online orders. So, am I safe to assume that reduces the conversations between the menu board and the people?
If that's, if Chipotle does end up the end user, which that's the intent right now, there would be no discussion.
Right.
You're simply driving up to pick up your order.
Okay, perfect.
And they do have published numbers that they indicate 98% of the time, they're at four cars or less.
Yeah.
So, it's a very, a much quicker turnover, faster process. So, yeah, it limits the noise as well.
Yeah, I mean, that's change. Is there any improves something we already, you know, approved in the past? And then, also, I would offer that the sound study concluded that the noise from this would be below our ordinance required levels.
And I will note, the sound study did assume a standard full order. So, they didn't assume there is no order board. They still put that in there.
Yeah.
Concerning the lineup and queuing, what happens when someone is there before their food? Is there a place for them to go? Because the person behind them is waiting.
You know, it's pretty commonplace nowadays that they direct you to a parking spot and wait, if that is the case. I mean, they're pretty good about indicating what your time slot is. I'm sure it does.
Do we have those spaces in this plan?
They're not delineated with a sign, no, no.
The noise impact said that the hours of operation would be from until 11:00 PM. Is that just for the drive-through only?
That was the, that was the drive-through use only with, again, that specific user being Chipotle. That's their published hours. The other users are not known, but I would not anticipate them to be, to be at 11:00 PM.
It's from 7:00 to 10:00 in the impact section. So, I just was curious, is the difference between the drive-through and the restaurant? Is it just drive-through only?
No, there's, there's seats inside as well.
Okay.
But the drive-through use is only for online order.
Until 11:00? And then, the restaurant itself is until 10:00. Is that correct?
I don't believe it indicated that. Let me, let me check. What page is that on?
Page 45 has it from 7:00 to 10:00. And then, page 38 has it until 11:00.
I only printed the first 15 pages for the summary report. I don't have all the background on that. As far as the operation, I want to say it's going to 11:00.
The hours of operation for the proposed commercial uses would be from 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM, while the drive-through would operate from 10:00 to 11:00.
Correct. So, the other users, you know, without knowing what other users are there, we need to allot that earlier morning time because Chipotle doesn't have, you know, the breakfast. They typically start at that 10:00 AM timeframe. And we know that Chipotle, per their published hours, go to 11:00 PM. So, those other users would not only be within that time slot, but also potentially starting earlier in the morning.
So, that's for every user in this prospective building? Okay, okay.
I have a couple of questions real quick. I wasn't here for the first site plan review, you know, the approval of it. I was absent. So, and the first time I saw it, it's still, this just still bothers me. I am concerned about the outdoor seating. If you're parking in the front of the building, you know, you've got that walkway to get to your car, and you can walk safely. But if you're parking in the area to the side, you're basically cutting across, you're going to have to cut across the drive-through area, parking area. And the vehicle, if they're alongside where the outdoor seating is, there's a high probability that they could overlook seeing somebody approaching that area. I just think it's dangerous to me. And maybe I don't approve a lot of these, but I just, you know, is this something that has to be there?
So when you look at the overall site layout, this site in particular with its depth constraint, a lot of it did design itself. So when you look at the parking allocation, number one, that's based on the size of the building and the uses that are anticipated in there. And then you look at, you know, the building setback that's available, you look at the location of where that drive approach is coming into the site, you know, to essentially avoid that condition where you have, you know, a limited number of users crossing over that drive-through lane. You know, that building, it's either you're not developing that north portion, you're leaving it vacant, or you're shifting the building further to the north. And then when you shift it further to the north, you're driving straight at the building. And when you do that, you're creating a lot of decisions that have to be made.
No, right, I agree with that.
Including parking right in front of the building. So, you know, those are probably the least desirable parking spaces anyway. You know, we haven't allocated specific spaces for, say, employees or something, but that can certainly always be a directive to limit that. You know, I've seen other uses, just, you know, with the profession, I try to look, pay attention to what other sites look like. And it's not uncommon that there are drive-throughs that have crossover lanes. So, you know, as far as demarcation, we can certainly add striping to help demarcate it. There will be signs of some sort, certainly a thank you sign. We can also add a stop sign on, you know, on the underside of that. You know, there's about 20, about 20 or so feet on the south from the, it's rotated, from the west, northwest corner of the building to where the pedestrian would actually be crossing that lane. So as far as like a blind spot, I mean, that would really only be in an instance where that one table is fully occupied and, you know, I just don't see the chance really to be.
Yeah, if anything we can do to do that, I'm more concerned about the child that's running ahead of mom and is a little excited, and you can't see them, and they go running across. I mean, the good news is they're not doing 25 miles an hour, but I mean, there's still is a lot of danger there. So that'd be something I'd like to ask. And then the only other question I had is, having just read this, but isn't there a Chipotle already around the corner from this site?
There's a Qdoba.
Huh?
Qdoba.
Oh, a different one, right? Okay.
There's a fence there at that seating area too, isn't there?
Thank you.
There's a fence at that seating area.
Correct. There's your typical, like, three-foot-high aluminum, you know, decorative aluminum.
Perfect kind of young child.
So as far as, yeah, that'll delineate the space as far as, you know, cars and separating the space of the person sitting there.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, sorry, regarding entrance and exits. This site makes me nervous looking at every which way cars can go and options. You mentioned signage is going to be important, which I absolutely agree with, because if you're looking at this site and you're looking at the car wash, the car wash, you can go two ways around. You can go, you can only go in east and exit and going north, which is good, but you can go around and then circle back around the other way, and then it looks like you could go through to where the next building is, and it looks like there's cross traffic, and then a middle lane that goes southbound. It's, to me, I'm looking at a major safety issue. So how can we address this? So people are, you know, when they enter, when they exit, when they go, you know, where they need to go, how do we make this safety, you know, a priority?
Traffic was one of the main topics when we first went through, particularly when we were talking about the car wash, when it was, you know, came through as a separate project. And through those discussions, there were conversations about, well, what if you make that, you know, that front drive in front of the car wash a one-way? We kind of walked through at the time ultimately what that would look like. There's still, you know, a future provision for a connection to the auto parts store on the north as well. That played into the conversation, because if you dedicate it to one way to gain more space for, you know, a frontage buffer, now all of a sudden, you're not set up for the future for that additional drive connection to the property of the north. So there was an extensive conversation as it pertains to the car wash. And another feature of the car wash, they have all the auto detect, collision detect on the exit of the car wash as well. So as far as circulation on the north side, that's not much of a concern. So as far as the full access approach, you know, aside from adding stop signs at three of the ways, so that way the person ingressing into the site doesn't impact anybody on Latson, getting them in the site would be the priority. So, you know, we could simply add three stop signs on those other legs.
I think it's a necessity, because if you look at the, Amy, can you scroll down? Yes. So if you look at where you've got cross, you know, coming in and going around this way, it also connects with the adjacent property that can go either way and then come through there if they want to go southbound, and they're going to sneak into that middle aisle. And I just, all I visualize is what everybody's talking about now is accidents.
I, I think the change in user for what we're seeing tonight pretty significantly reduces the amount of traffic from what we previously approved. And I think it improves the condition from what we already put on paper last year. In my opinion, this change of user from the coffee shop to this probably cuts down the amount of traffic in half, frankly. And, you know, I just envision this to be a far better and safer experience than what was there before.
So, and I did read the comments regarding if you don't have early morning coffee coming in, so you're cutting down on that morning traffic, which is great. But I know that they came in for a variance for, what, five signs for the car wash. So I want to be mindful, that is, we're, because this is not the place to talk about signage or variances, but I want the applicant to be aware and the end users to know that, to try and comply with that, but also bear in mind the safety features that need to be, you know, looked after. If stop signs are what's going to help people from merging into traffic where people are trying to squeak out really quickly because they see the cars, you know, they're, they can, they get a quick exit, I think that there needs to be very careful deliberation on that.
And additionally, you know, in talking with the road commission, there was a lot of back and forth. There was a few variations as we were going through it. And just with where these sites fall on Latson Road and where the lane work, existing lane work falls on Latson Road, this was ultimately the only approvable location in geometrics. And as far as like the car wash entrance being a right-in, right-out, you know, to address some additional concern of, you know, ingress and egress to the site, they wanted to make sure that the geometrics of that raised island is more aggressive, so you can really, you know, visually delineate for people that they should or should not be turning certain ways. And the car wash, Mr. Carwash in particular, is one of the more newer strategies with, you know, the subscription-based. So you do have primarily a set user. You know, it's not going to be off the whim, you know, somebody coming in unless they're starting a new subscription. So it's going to be very few. So people will ultimately get in the habit and go the path of least resistance, whether that be, you know, their habit, hey, I'm going to go the right-in into the car wash and get my car washed, and then I'm going to go pick up my Chipotle. Or they're going to develop their driving habit and use that entrance ultimately that they find is the path of least resistance, so.
What would be the timeframe for discussion regarding making lines, arrows, following that, you know, entrance and exit in this way? You're, because I know you have a shared drive that goes through. What would be the appropriate time to address those?
I mean, I can add signage and pedestrian crossing at the drive-through lane, you know, tomorrow, prior to township board, if it's a condition of the approval.
Mary Ann, what specifically are you looking for?
I'm just looking for something that when people come in and go out, they know where they need to go, because there's a lot of traffic. Both areas are coming in and out and crossing each other. And you've got, you know, to the north of you, you've got two different means of what people are doing. They want to go get their car washed, and they want to turn around and go get their vacuum, and then they can turn around and go the other way. They don't have to, they have the ability to go both ways.
So right now, there's arrows and delineated lines for this entry here. So there's, there's a right and left turn arrow.
Those will be imposed on there.
And those, that's, those are pavement markings.
Okay.
Yeah, at the approach right there by the sidewalk, yes.
Yes, okay. Well, that's perfect. Thank you, Eric.
And the other ones internally are pavement markings as well.
Perfect. Okay, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah, not just on paper, but they get put on the pavement.
They're just not at all four legs of that little intersection.
That's exactly what I was hoping to address. Thank you.
Any other discussion up front? Seeing none, I'll call to the public. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this issue? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back up in front for a further discussion. If you have any other questions, concerns.
I can make a motion.
All right, okay.
I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion for the recommendation of a special use application on hearing number two.
Support. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none. Motion passes. Looking for recommendation in the environmental impact assessment.
I'd like to make a motion to, for the recommendation of environmental impact assessment dated 5/27/25.
Support. It's 5/20/25?
5/27/25.
5/27/25.
My sheet says 5/20, I'm sorry. Okay. It's 27. Any other discussion? Do we have most, have support?
Yep.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion for the recommendation of site plan dated 5/27/25.
Support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Extra time.
Mine says 22 and 25. I've got different dates. I've got the up-to-date stuff.
Mine doesn't.
It's great.
All right, open public hearing number three. Consideration of a special land use application impact assessment, private road with a shared driveway for seven new homes on 28.39 acres located at 6025 Brighton Road. Special land use is required for shared driveway crossing regulated wetland and 25-foot nature feature buffer. The proposed development is for the following parcels, 4711, 26, 3011, and 4711, 27, 212. Request is submitted by Boss Engineering. And there they are, just like that.
Good evening. I'm Brett Levanoy with Boss Engineering. To my left is Kevin Van Canell, owner and developer of the project. And also in the audience are Kevin's wife Carolyn and Nick Lambertjack with our office. So this is a 20-acre parcel. It's on the north side of Brighton Road, east of Clifford, lines up directly across the street from the subdivision entrance. We are proposing seven parcels, so this would be, these would be land divisions on the 20 acres. And this is a combination of a private road and shared driveway. As you can see, the private road terminates, comes off Brighton Road terminates with the T-turnaround, and then the shared drive extends past that to another T-turnaround. We do have, the house on the parcel is expected to remain. And we're here this evening for several approvals. The private road approval of the plan and the impact assessment, and then also we do have the very small wetland crossing. This wetland is essentially a ditch that is developed wetland vegetation over time. So it is a regulated wetland because it connects to a larger wetland network. So that would be the special use permit we are requesting. We have received letters of approval from Brighton Area Fire Authority and your planning consultant and your engineering consultant. We have been in contact with the road commission and have the road entrance approved. We have done all the tests with the health department. And we are in the process of getting the wetland crossing approved by state of Michigan. I think with that, that kind of summarizes the project, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, we'll tend to turn it over to the planner first. Mr. Brian?
Thanks again, Mr. Chair. So for starters, procedurally, once again, we have three items on your agenda. Once again, we have three items that are in front of you for recommendation to the township board. Board has final review approval authority over the special use, the impact assessment, and the site plan itself. That being said, I have broken my review letter down into three sections. So I'll start with the shared residential driveway. So based on the standards in section 15.04, they are allowed to have, I believe it's up to four residential units, access a shared driveway as opposed to a private road. Similar to what I'm going to say with respect to the private road, the construction standards, I'm going to defer to fire authority and Shelby in terms of the township engineer. I'm not sure if part of the overall permit for the road and shared drive, if the county needs to be included with the shared drive or not, so I just left in sort of a placeholder of if it's necessary, they'll have to get a permit as it relates to the shared driveway. And then, as already noted, they will also have to obtain a permit from Eagle at the state level for the wetland crossing. With the private road itself, these are found in section, or the review standards are in section 15.05 for the commission's consideration. Petitioner did provide the required private road easement and maintenance agreement. Comment is simply make sure that any comments from staff or township attorney are addressed within that agreement. Again, deferring design and construction requirements to review by township engineer and Brighton Area Fire Authority. And closing point on the road is I do believe ultimately that road commission approval is needed. They will need a permit. So you could condition your recommendation. Ultimately, the board could condition their approval, though it sounds like these review procedures are already well underway for the outside agencies. As it relates to the special land use component, so this is specific to the wetland crossing. So your ordinance has a 25-foot natural feature setback. In this case, they have to cross not only into the setback, but actually into the wetland itself. That's why Eagle comes into play at the state level. So again, we've already noted, they will have to obtain that permit. Related to the special land use standards, section 19.03 provides the special land use general standards for the commission's consideration. This is one of those situations where the master plan doesn't have a great, I guess, a great response for me to put forth in terms of a finding, a very clear-cut finding, that is. So I do think that as long as you feel that the impacts of the wetland are minimized and mitigated to the greatest extent possible, I do think you can make a case that ultimately it is upholding the recommendations of the master plan itself, though again, it's kind of a generic statement for me to say it that way. But if you feel it's okay, then I think you can make that finding as part of your recommendation. But if you feel it's okay, then I think you can make that finding as part of your recommendation. Similar, any, anything identified by Fire Authority and engineer have to be addressed. And then specifically, if you do put forth the recommendation tonight, the ordinance does require that anytime you get beyond not only the twenty-five foot, but when you get within ten feet of a wetland itself, it does require a specific authorization from the planning commission. So if you're gonna put forth a recommendation tonight, I would like your motion to specifically note that you're allowing the encroachment not only into the twenty-five foot setback requirement, but also into and across the wetland itself. So hopefully that makes sense. That's the request that's before you, but the ordinance specifically says that you have to authorize it if it's within ten feet. So hopefully that makes sense. Happy to take questions if not though, Mr. Chair.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mary Ann.
Can you explain to me why we wouldn't be requesting a variance for that? And it's just up to the planning commission?
Because it's a planning commission authority under the ordinance.
So they don't need a variance request at all?
Nope.
Okay.
That's very common with natural feature setbacks.
Okay.
Generally speaking, their, their planning commission functions as opposed to zoning board variances.
Every detention pond basically has one for its spillway.
Yeah.
Thank you.
This, I looked at the photographs, at, at first in my mind, I thought it was like a little, a little valley, but it just looks like it's, it's pretty flat there. So how does, if this, if this pavement cuts that swale in half? There's not gonna be any like underflow or a drainage tube to connect one side of the road to the other side of the road, that water, is there?
Yes, there will be a culvert.
Underneath the road?
It would have to be.
Yeah, yeah.
Shelby?
Okay, I just had a couple things. One is per the zoning ordinance, I think technically a center lane island or continuous loop would be required for over five lots. But that is not, that's something that the planning commission can approve otherwise, I think. In this case, a hammerhead is proposed and the Fire Authority, or yeah, the Fire Authority approved it, so I wouldn't have an issue with doing that hammerhead type, style turnaround as opposed to a cul-de-sac. Especially cause it's only six lots, I believe. And the other comment I had is that the Fire Authority required them to have an increased private road width of twenty-six feet wide when your zoning ordinance requires twenty-two feet with a five-foot gravel shoulder. Because the Fire Authority made them increase to a twenty-six wide paved drive, they're now showing a three-foot wide gravel shoulder and I, I agree with that change as well, so. No other concerns.
Your first comment, did I hear correctly that it should be a divided drive at the entry with the?
No, it's, it's so, it's for the turnaround on a dead end road. Per the zoning ordinance, I believe that if there's more than five lots, it should be a turnaround with a centered landscape island. It's like a big loop or just a cul-de-sac. Or the site, I think, would be a continuous loop is what it's saying. In this case, they did a hammerhead turnaround.
Right, okay, alright.
If I could too, Mr. Chair, sorry if you guys can't hear my mic. There is also within that language that Shelby cited, there is a planning commission discretion within that. So if the T turnarounds are acceptable from an engineering perspective and from an emergency standpoint, you, you can allow them.
Am I, am I correct in assuming that these driveways for these units will come off of those T turnarounds? Or not?
So, of course, there's the, the drive for the existing house, which we've already indicated, and that comes off essentially the end of the, the private road portion of the development.
So like parcel one and parcel two as an example?
So parcel-
Is there an opportunity for them to share that T turnaround?
You know, it's, it's gonna depend on the houses, the house locations, the garage locations. And the concern, I think if you were to ask the Fire Authority, they wanna make sure obviously nobody is parking in those. And they can be signed, but at the same time, you know, it has to be enforced. So I wouldn't rule out that they would utilize that driveway, the turnaround as their driveway, but I also wouldn't say that it would be a necessity.
Here's my concern. You know, we're using this, I say we, you, we're using this combination of the proposed private road easement with the proposed private drive. So in combination, you're stacking this on, right? And of course, you know, it's, it's seven parcels, one being there, it saves money. It, it, that makes sense to me, I totally get that. Like why, why have the expense or the, the big improvements of a cul-de-sac and all that? I, I just find it would be funny if these six lots didn't utilize the three hammerheads that are on these properties right now. It would create a kind of unique and strange private driveway, actually. So regardless of how the, like, legalities are, the, how we got here, there's also like the reality of what it feels like when it's all said and done. And no one's gonna like drive two-hundred feet down and be like, oh, obviously this went from being a private road to a private driveway. No one's gonna care or know or go to those efforts and extremes. But they'll feel three hammerheads and separate driveways going down that road. And it will feel different than another private road or another roadway that you go down. And so, thinking about the long-term for our community, I guess my, my question is, is there an opportunity here to request that those parcels utilize those hammerheads as their driveways so that this presents in a kinda normal fashion as a road in our community? Instead of some awkward haphazard feeling thing? I imagine you would want that too, as a developer. But that, that's just kinda my concern is that if no one utilizes it, this is gonna feel like an awkward, funny, like, why did they do that kinda road? And frankly, I don't want one of those in our communities. We got a couple roundabouts in our area that's, we're good, we're good with like that. So, I, I guess what's your reaction to my kind of spewing there? And, and how do we assure that this presents long-term as just a really great, nice private road for seven residents, right?
And I think, you know, with it being only seven residents, you know, we're not talking about a big development, obviously. I also think, my initial thought is-
But it has a name, it's gonna be in, like, it will have-
Oh, for sure.
Yeah.
It'll have development name, for sure. But also, anytime two people are expected to share something, it's always a concern.
I mean, they're sharing, or seven people are sharing, really, it's private.
They are, but the, specifically though, that first, that hammerhead section that becomes two driveways that will be shared by those two parcel owners. Certainly not an impossible situation, but I think it is potentially inviting neighbor disputes. But the, the positives are, you know, these, these two parcels have part of their driveway paid for to begin with. Because it'll be, that pavement will be there when Kevin, Kevin and Carolyn developed the project. So, I mean, as with most things, there, I think there are pros and cons. Could we make it work? I'm sure we could, I mean, it's, again, it's total seven parcels and we're talking-
Parcel three and parcel four feel like no brainers to me. Like you can easily tie those in and make those driveways. I think the weird one is that delineation between parcel one and parcel two. So is there any opportunity to just put that hammerhead just on one parcel and require that one parcel? Then you get away from what you just mentioned? Or is the length not accommodate that, that length that you need for this to be a, a private road?
Yeah, I mean, the, the length is set up for the private road. And the, the parcels were set up to, you know, intentionally split it to maximize the frontages that were available to both, but.
Even just to jog in that property line or something?
Are you suggesting just put a driveway here and a driveway here instead of that hammerhead?
They have to have the hammerhead by, for, by the fire department rules. I'm suggesting that somehow the property boundaries reorientate so that either parcel two or parcel one, that that naturally becomes its driveway extension. Because otherwise, it just kinda sits out there. You also have to picture this, what's not shown on the plans is a future driveway for two parcels that will go who knows where. But it'll be pretty darn near this hammerhead and it will just present weird, I think.
A sure driveway could keep them from parking on it too.
Right, yeah.
So then I have a question, just not that familiar with the hammerheads. Are you saying then parcel seven and parcel five would just have an extension from the road? That would, and the driveway would go right up to it?
Those driveways would go to this new created old bond court, yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah. But I think those-
You're just concerned about the hammerhead?
I'm just concerned about those three hammerheads and, and I wouldn't want, here, there'd be seven parcels and there's a risk here of having ten looking like-
Entrances.
-driveway entries. And I, if we can get to seven, then the whole thing presents like a normal, platted, you know, divided property. And it just feels normal then, so. That's, that's my charge is, can we get to that point? Amy's got thoughts.
I do, and I'm sorry. I just worry that you're taking somebody's driveway away. They can't park in that, in that place. So where, let's say they have a graduation party, where are those people gonna park?
Oh, I worry they're gonna park there now.
Well, I think they're-
I'm worried they're gonna store a boat there.
Would they park on the road then? Especially in the shared driveway part where you're only at twenty feet? That was just one of my concerns. There is one like that, that is in the ridge, if you wanna take that and pass it down. That, is it actually what you're talking about?
Yeah.
So I, that was just one of my concerns, was just like, where are they gonna park?
You know, I, I, I could probably be convinced to live with one. I would just hate to have three with a little road with seven lots on it, you know? It just doesn't, I don't know, it just doesn't make sense to me. Yeah. And that's kinda what I'm asking them to do.
Yeah. Right. I, I was just throwing that out there.
Yeah.
I was like, I'm sorry.
So, they're doing this to avoid the roundabout.
Yeah, three and, three and-
Costs, because then when you kick into the private road standards all the way through, you're talking curb and gutter and storm sewer and like all these other things.
Alright.
So they're just doing it from here to here and it's a private driveway and it reduces costs. So functions as your four units.
I can't remember if I already put this in the, in the record, but there is, are no comments that have not been addressed by the applicant for the Fire Authority. So Fire Authority is on board with everything. Any further discussion up front?
I have, I have a few questions regarding the cross-access over the wetland area. There were a number of notes from the, oh, let's see. Regarding the soil borings and different areas where they were going into the wetland or they were not going into the wetland. I did not see where like those were. My, my biggest concern is, what is the, what's the area that you're going over? What's the dimension of that area you're going over? And from what the reports were, how does that relate to this area specifically?
Yep, so, so it's four feet wide that, that wetland water courses.
Okay.
And then it's the width of the disturbance is the, the width of the road with a shared drive, which has to be the twenty, plus the culvert and side slope. So it's about one one-hundredth of an acre is the disturbance.
And do we have anything from a wetland, other than the wetland surveys that were done and the, the comments? Do we have anything from a wetland consulting company that says by, you know, putting a road through there, what kind of impact that will have on the surrounding area?
So Patrick Cleary with our office is registered landscape architect and a, a wetland scientist registered with the state. So Patrick did the delineation and he prepared the report. And then the application itself to Eagle, we have what are called data sheets-
Right.
-that are submitted as part of that application. And those detail in scientific terms, the types of vegetation-
Right.
-and the soils that are in that particular area. So the state has all that information when they make their decisions with regard to granting a permit.
Okay. So they will, Patrick, and, and that is on page ninety-five that he's written where the A and B are. And he's done a summary, that goes to Eagle for their review and approval process to, to grant this. I have a question, because I know Batkey Lake, remember back in the ZBA? They had to install a well because the water level over at Batkey Lake was so low. And I know that this wetland goes over to there. Was there any correlating information that you were able to tap into or use to make sure that that would not be an issue for Batkey?
So this development is a, a very low impact. We are at, doing some grading and some paving, but, and we are installing the detention basin. We're essentially not changing the hydro, hydrologic characteristics of the site. So if there's water going there from the site currently, it will continue to go there. We do have the detention basin with four bay, which will be utilized for stormwater management.
So it should not have any effect on Batkey, on the, the water that's, okay. Cause I know those people put some money into putting that well in and to make sure, monitor it so that they don't lose their lake level. And I, we wanna make sure that that, that's, this is whatever could potentially develop here would not be detrimental to them.
So their issue is low lake level?
Yes, so they had to actually add a well-
Alright.
-to the area, that's a common well that they monitor, yes.
That started with the city's new wells. They're in the same aquifer that feeds that Becky Lake. And when the city put in their new wells, that lake went down. I built a house on the property with that wall in there. Now they go, flip that switch every so often.
Okay.
What is the, what does that wetland look like right now?
The large wetland or the, the ditch? It looks like a ditch. But it does have wetland vegetation, if you know what you're looking for. But it looks like a ditch.
Yeah, I think everybody pictures cattails and ducks kissing when they see wetlands.
Page, page one oh three.
Yeah, the pictures, pictures showed leaves and just water and-
Sticks on the ground, yeah. I, I thought it was gonna be like a, you know, filled with water and I was, oh, but it looks- Something you could just walk right across. I just have a question. Why, why pave it? Why not have crushed gravel or just a dirt road? Is there a benefit? It seemed like it would be a lot cheaper.
Yeah, you know, this was actually discussed, I think, early on to be gravel, but with it coming off a paved road and I think with the anticipated parcel prices, that the clientele would likely prefer a paved road.
Any other questions up front? Any other questions up front?
Uh, I guess, uh, does the petitioner have any, uh, comments or thoughts in regards to the, kinda the hammerhead comments I had made earlier? Do you have any, um, response to that or any resolution that would help me feel better about it?
So, we can certainly make it work within, you know, the documents that we create, the road maintenance agreement, deed restrictions, that type of thing. Um, if the planning commission feels strongly that it's a, a significant benefit to the development to utilize those as driveways, we just have to make sure we have the proper signage, obviously. Uh, because, uh, the fire department is always concerned whether you have a cul-de-sac or a T-turnaround or what, whatever type of turnaround there is, they want that to be unimpeded and, you know, and free flowing and accessible at all times for obvious reasons. So, so we can certainly specify for those particular driveways that they would utilize the hammerheads, uh, obviously only for access and that then they would not be, uh, able to be utilized for parking, for storing anything. They, they would have to remain, obviously, unimpeded, which they would have to anyway. So we're not, we're not really adding any additional enforcement other than when people see that as the beginning of their driveway, they're more likely to utilize all of it.
I don't know how the rest of the planning commission feels, I'm, I'm just one person.
You would have to put up signage anyway on these hammerheads.
Absolutely.
Prevent people from parking boats or their, their uncle's car for three days or what.
Uncle Eddie's RV, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know for a fact with seventeen-year-old kids coming to my house all the time, that's where I'm gonna send them to go park.
Yeah.
Unless it's a shared driveway.
If it's a shared driveway, you're forced to keep it open. Well, let's send it to the public. When I have a call to the public at this time, if there's anyone who'd like to speak on this issue, please come forward. Please state your name and, and what your address is.
Um, my name is Linda Raleigh and I live at five one one seven Forest View Court. We received a letter on this issue. And my concern is people going in both directions on Brighton Road and both people wanna make left-hand turns. We already have kind of a situation with Old Hickory and what used to be Old Hickory on the other side of the street, with people from both directions trying to make left-hand turns and nobody, nobody's moving. And then we have traffic backing up in both directions because neither people can get to the other side of the road. And now there'll be another intersection like that? So, that's my concern.
Thank you. Is there anything else? Please state your name and address again, please.
Deborah Beatty, three one zero nine Pineview Trail. Um, my biggest concern is that small wetland, which looks to me like that is a drain into the big wetland. So this drain is going to now be, uh, changed a lot because of all of the, um, concrete roads, houses and everything. More water, more water coming off of all of those properties. And it seems like that's gonna go right into that drain. And we're gonna, I'm calling that long strip a drain. And then that drain goes right into the wetland. So what are we actually doing to the wetland when those properties are all going to be sending more water, um, into that drain? Not, do we want that water from properties? Usually we don't, it's fertilizer and road, you know, car, whatever happens with cars and whatever people are putting on their lawns. Um, and the other, I, I understand Eric's, um, concern about that and I don't know why they don't do the cul-de-sac. Um, and then with that ten-foot easement, that seems to me like that should never be allowed onto the wetland. They're talking about me. Um, a ten-foot easement against the wetland, that, that should be changed too. And all of this is about is they wanna put this many homes on this property. Well, I think they should be making the changes that make that wetland safe and, um, and the road safe with the turnarounds. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Saying none, we'll bring it back up front and the petitioner would like to speak?
I've been married thirty years and I wanna stay married. And I've learned that, I have an opinion about those driveways, but I have to check with my wife to know what they are. So I would not like to be bound by, uh, not knowing where the layouts for the houses are gonna go yet. We're gonna, we're gonna be a homeowner that lives back there. We live across the street, we live off of Old Hickory. I understand the lady's concern about, uh, left-hand turns. We, we do it out of there all the time, I don't think it's been a big problem. But I think there's, you know, we, we'd be open to looking at some stuff with the driveway with, off the hammerheads, but I think there's some pros and cons to that. But we'd like to look at the layout of the property. And then the wetland concern, if, if you're out there now, I think this will be better for the wetlands than what's been going on there for a long time, uh, as the farm. And it's really just a two or three-foot dry piece of land right now, it's always been dry. Two years ago, there was a little bit of water in there and I think as Brent said, if you looked at it and you identified the vegetation there, that's the only reason you'd recognize it as a wetland. That's not, uh, a real wetland, a- as we think of it. You know, when you hear wetlands, I, I think a gentleman said earlier, Tim, about the cattails and all this stuff, there's not that stuff out there. So I think if you saw it, your concerns would be eased on all that.
Amy, can you show, uh, one oh three, page one oh three of the packet?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, did someone tell you it was a wetland?
Yeah, until I saw those, I thought it was kissing ducks and all, cattails or anything else and I was like, oh.
Yeah.
It's like a little wet area in the woods.
It sounds terrible, but it's not.
And you said that that's four feet wide?
Approximately, yes. Yeah, and it's, it's really kinda so flat that you really, it's hard to see the elevation change in those pictures. And that's, and that, again, that's only wetland A, so wetland B, picture that you see there, that's the larger wetland. That's not part of what we're talking about. We're only talking about wetland A.
So wetland A, it says that there's, um, surface water present and stained leaves. A two says, uh, sampled it in the wetland, it's darker but somewhat murky. A, A three ones is, um, no surface water, so it's-
Yeah, I mean, so I think that bottom photo is pretty indicative of the majority of that.
And it's heavily tree, cover of, heavily tree there?
Uh, parts of it are within tree cover and parts are not. Obviously where the, the leaves are, you know, that's an area that has, um, more of the tree cover over it.
So it doesn't necessarily have any sun to kind of soak up any, dry any water or anything, yeah?
When it comes to the wetlands, I think we have two benefits in this community. Um, one is of course Eagle and the protections that they put in place for our entire state. And the second is, which is actually unique, is the twenty-five-foot environmental feature setback. And, uh, in this instance, that covers both the major wetland on the northeast corner of the property and then also that, that strip, that drain too. And, um, you know, that setback, um, what that means is, is that none of those homeowners can go in and just plant grass there. Um, that's got to s- remain and be preserved as the natural feature in the current state that it's in. And that, that, that buffer, that twenty-five foot, doesn't just preserve the upland there, also does prevent some of those other concerns, um, from, from entering into the overall wetland area as well. And so, you know, I think we have some good things in place already, uh, for the protection of that wetland. That's my opinion on it. You know, I, I heard the petitioner say you wanna keep your options open for your driveways and I can appreciate that. Um, I probably would ask for the same if I was in your position, but I'm not in your position. And, uh, the, the fact that you're in here tonight asking not for a, a private road for the full thing, but a private road for just a chunk or for the first section of it and then a private drive. Like there's already, I feel like, a bit of accommodations being requested here tonight. And I think they're appropriate accommodations, but, you know, frankly, personally, I would still like to see two out of three of those hammerheads be utilized by driveways, uh, just to, maybe it's just a little bit of my LCD kicking in too, but just from a geometry standpoint, it just makes sense to me, frankly, so, um, that's my kinda, my thoughts on that. Um, and I think the back two make a perfect sense for that. I could probably, uh, budge a little bit on that front one, acknowledging and recognizing how it's split between a couple of properties and that can get, you know, strange, but, um-
So what are you seeing, like, um, in terms of, is it five and six?
Mm-hmm.
Would it be able to utilize it, that makes sense? Your driveway looks like it's gonna come in right off of those anyway.
Three and, it's parcel three and four.
Three and four?
Yep, yeah, parcel three uses the one, parcel four uses the other. That just makes a lot of sense to me. And the one up front, that hammerhead.
One and two.
One and two, you know, um, maybe they can figure it out and make it work, but if not, not gonna lose sleep over it. Right?
And they're each two-acre parcels?
Mm-hmm. Scale-wise too, I mean, this is a pretty large, yeah.
Yeah.
It's, yeah.
Should be able to accommodate it.
Yeah, I would think being able to utilize that and come in where your drive is, cause you've got plenty of area where you're gonna put your house, either area, yeah.
Parcel one, they may wanna face Brighton Road, frankly. So I, I, I can respect like wanting to keep their options open for a custom build, right?
You wanna look at a racetrack. All right. Any other discussion? We open for a motion.
Can I ask a question to the petitioner before I, yeah? If I made a motion that required parcels three and parcels four to use those hammerheads as part of the driveway extensions? I don't have to ask the question technically, but I, I, I wanna know what-
So, so we are looking at the topography right now, we're looking at page five. And, and there are some concerns about us using, utilizing them from a topography standpoint. They have, may not be the best location for the driveways for the parcels. Um, you know, we have to obviously consider septic field locations, et cetera, walkouts, those types of things. So it, I mean, it, the, we don't know if they will be the best locations. They may turn out to be perfectly fine or they may just not be where we want driveways or where the builder wants the driveway or where the future purchaser wants the driveway from a topography standpoint. So I understand the geometric part of it, but I, I mean, and we do have some slopes back there, so I'm just, I'm not positive that that is in fact gonna be the best location for driveways.
Let me ask this, wouldn't you expect that someone is gonna buy a lot in this area that's gonna have the cost that it's gonna have? Um, would look at this and say, I've gotta put my, my driveway there, otherwise it looks really weird. Why would I do that with this house?
Well, they may.
You know what I'm saying, I mean the-
They may say that, but I think our point is we're, we're concerned about limiting that to that. But absolutely they might take it for granted.
I'm not even saying, I'm not even saying if you limit it to that. I'm saying if it's there and they put it in a driveway somewhere else, it's gonna be odd-looking and they're gonna, they're, they won't wanna have, they won't wanna do that. I can see them naturally gravitating to what you've got here and saying, these are our curb cuts, if you will.
But that's gonna be driven by the building envelope that he says, it's gotta look by the geography.
Again, it's, you know, these will be purchasers who will work with the builder and work with the, uh, arriving at a house of land which they prefer. And, yeah, it's, certainly it's entirely possible to utilize those. We're not, uh, we're not gonna prohibit that.
Right.
But our thought was having the flexibility to allow them for something other than the use of the enclosures.
Um, I'm ready to make a motion.
You know what?
And we can just let the chips fall as they do.
Lot three is a lot that we wanna build on, that, that's where we wanna live. So I hear your concern and I would, that'd be fine for me if I could make it work like that. We just don't know the layout on how to put that house there yet. If that, that makes the most sense, that may be-
Brent, can you move the hammerhead a little bit to accommodate wherever the driveway is?
It depends on where to put it, I guess, but certainly there's, there's possibility.
So worth, is it worth tabling?
Do, do you, are you the owner of the twenty acres and you wanna live on this ten right here?
Yes.
I don't know, I'm inclined to make the motion, you, we can all just let the chips fall as they need to. So.
Wanna make a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. So the, my motion on the hammerhead won't show up till the third one, just so you guys are aware. So the first two won't have that in it. So, Mr. Chair like to make a motion to the township board, uh, to recommend the special land use, uh, application, uh, for public area number three, uh, provided that the, this board finds that, um, the, um, encroachment within the twenty-five-foot natural feature setback and over the wetland crossings as well is, uh, meets the intent of the township zoning ordinance.
Or-
Does it need approval from Eagle?
Um-
With that for site plan?
That's for-
That'll be for site plan.
Okay.
Yep.
Those, what was the comment?
Does it, does that need to see support for Eagle in the special use?
Oh, oh.
Cause that's what this is, the special use, so you couldn't-
Yep. I'll put that in the site plan.
Any other discussion on this first motion?
Amy?
Go right ahead.
That was just one condition? Is that it?
For the moment?
Yeah, one condition for, yep.
Steph has a comment.
Amy?
I was wondering if this is the place or if we could ask for demarcation signs for the wetlands?
Under site plan?
Or if you want that under site plan?
I want that under site plan, cause I was gonna put the Eagle stuff under the site plan too.
Okay.
So that feels kinda neat under that, I think.
I agree.
We have support, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, passes unanimously, and we're on to environmental impact assessment.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to recommend the township board approval of the environmental impact assessment dated five twenty twenty, twenty-five.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none passes, and we move on to the site plan.
And, uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to recommend the township board, uh, approval of the site plan dated July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, uh, with following conditions, that the, uh, comments within the review letters from the township engineer, township planner, uh, are, um, conditioned, uh, within this. Uh, that the petitioner will, uh, have receipt of a permit through Eagle for the wetland crossings prior to issuance of a land use permit. And that the hammerheads for parcels three and four shall be identified, uh, as being utilized for the driveways for their concurrent parcels. And also that the delineation signs for the wetlands, um- and also that the delineation signs for the wetlands are also added to the site plan as well.
Any discussion?
You want more? What do you want?
And, and mark, and state, and state.
I have a question actually for Brent, just because I don't know the process of this. So this is gonna be a parcel split. And if Eagle, let's just say Eagle denies their permit and we've already created that split, we have parcels that are landlocked, so we wouldn't be able.
Parcel split doesn't happen until the county gets involved.
No, the assessor does our county split, does our splits. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't do the splits prior to Eagle approval.
Yeah, initiated upon or approval of Eagle.
Yeah.
That's just what I wanted to make sure.
All right. Where are we, Patty? Where are we with that motion?
Can you repeat the motion, please?
All right, here, here it is, bullet points ready, planner, engineer, Eagle, all that. That parcels three and four utilize the hammerheads that are on those properties as their driveway extensions, and that the delineation of the wetland becomes part of the site plan now as well, prior to going to Township Board.
And, discussion?
Yeah, I, I got a question. What's the right of appeal if they find that it inhibits them from, using the driveway inhibits them from putting the house correctly?
They come back to us for an approval on it. They have to make a change to the site plan.
Well, for one thing, parcel four, there's no other way to put a driveway on there. Because you got a hammerhead right at the property.
They could come off here, they could.
Well, they're gonna have to come off.
It limits their, it limits their options.
They can't, there's no room for it.
But then we'd see it.
Well, the house is gonna be here anyway, because of the twenty-five feet you have to stay from. This is the big, this is the buildable usable area. Discussion, still question? Should there be signs on the property for the wetlands?
That's what.
Not just on the plan itself, but on the property?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, that's what I meant by that, yes, yes.
Thank you, yeah.
All right. All those in favor? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none, passes. Congratulations. One small step. Next up is open public hearing number four, consideration of an ordinance amendment to Article thirteen. We're gonna take a five-minute recess. Cut after. Last one. Open public hearing number four, consideration of an ordinance amendment to Article thirteen entitled Environmental Protection Regulations and Article twenty-one entitled Administrative and Enforcement. Staff request that Article thirteen Environmental Protection Regulation to be posted to the September eighth, two thousand twenty-five Planning Commission meeting. All right. So, are you leading this, Amy?
Uh, yeah, so regarding the Article thirteen, I actually reached out to a landscape architect, which actually is Mr. Cleary, who is also, works for the state of Michigan for wetlands. So I wanted to get his feedback, and he gave me great feedback, especially when they deal with other communities. So we are actually gonna be sitting down and meeting on that. I just wanna make sure we're getting this done and we're doing it right, because it's kind of a big change for all of our property owners. And then, in addition to number twenty, Article twenty-one, this was brought up due to the master plan. So we made the change to, for a moratorium, and it's in our ordinance, so we can just do it by a resolution. And with the master plan, because we have so many things up in the air right now, that if someone wants to come in, we could have the right to put a moratorium on rezonings or site plans or special uses. And that's why we're doing this change. And then the other change that's in there is the sign requirement. It's something we've been wanting to do for a long time. That, so when a project is coming before us, they put a sign on the property, so everybody knows, not just anybody within three hundred feet. So if they're driving by and they live a mile down the road, they would know what's going on. And they would contact the township and get all the facts in regards to that.
That's a good idea, because I, I go, my sister lives in South Lyon, and their development pro, future home, bam, from Mr. Carwash, or something like that.
Yeah, you see them a lot, like, as soon as they start, like, they get their land use permit, they put that sign in there, future home of this. But we want it to, when they start, so it has to be installed prior to the first public hearing. So anybody can find out about it.
So I have a couple of things that I went through. You ready for some comments?
Sure.
So, under E, where it says applicant shall be responsible for erecting and maintaining the signs through the public hearing dates and removing the sign. It has to be removed within seven days after final approval received from the township. Oh, actually, sorry, received from the Township Board of Trustees. That, there, is there any penalty for things in here that if they don't comply?
That was in art, that's in this article.
This, this one that we're looking at?
Yes, so you have violations and penalties.
Okay.
That is what we rely on for all of our site plans.
Okay. Then, under D, where it says sign shall be erected at least twenty-one days prior to the first scheduled public hearing. There have been instances where you've gotten paperwork and they're scheduled and somebody stuck something in at the last second and so it's not, what happens if it's not twenty-one days?
Right.
They just, sorry, you're gonna have to wait until the next meeting? Okay, cool. Then where it says, let me see, number three, generalized map of the property. Does that mean like a layout of the land with surrounding parcels? Should there be like an example so that people can say, this is what it needs to look like?
I can put, I can put an example in there?
Yeah.
And maybe give them some additional items to add?
So, for instance, we were looking at legacy today. Should there, should it be something like what legacy, you know, submitted with surrounding boundaries? What does that look like?
Okay.
And then, five, sign shall indicate to contact the Planning Commission for information regarding the timetable location of Planning Commission. Do you think that that should be just like a template and you say, here, here's everything, this is where you need to call, so that all they need to do when they go to the sign company is they can go to your JPEG and say, this needs to go in there? Because you're, now you're leaving it up to them to figure out how to design the sign and should there be like a, a size that's visible? You already have it, you know, it has to be a certain sign, but should.
Same with the lettering.
The lettering, yeah.
So, it. I'm just trying to think.
Just because I've done signs for my whole life, right? And people always say, well, how big do you want this? You have lettering, but you know, you're gonna have this, you're gonna have the, the layout of the parcel, and they're gonna have this number to call.
So then all the lettering's gonna be four inches except the top part, I believe.
And it's gonna say, contact the Planning Commission for information regarding the date, time, and location of planning. It's gonna have, it's, that's what it says on there, right?
It's also gonna have the phone number and the contact information for the planning director.
So you know what you want on there, I'm just saying, can you do a box, a template that says, this has to go on it.
So you want me to make that with, like, with the sample map, do a sample?
Yeah, so that, that, it's standardized and everybody uses the same thing, and then it's kind of.
The sign should be the same regardless of what, where the development is. Sign should be, just like.
I think it provides some continuity with.
Yeah, that's, that makes sense.
Okay. I had to, I was, I had the signs eight feet tall, but we don't allow those. So I had to break it down.
I wanted everybody to see it.
Yeah.
Oh, and then the other thing it says, it says, number four, it says area and acreage of the property shall be included in the sign. Should that say, just, I chat GPT'd this, clearly state the property size or the acreage. So area and acreage of the property, so you're just gonna say like if you use the legacy again. Are you putting up there a hundred and twenty-seven acres? And then it's got the or, so it says, um, sorry, I just lost my place.
Area and acreage of the property shall be included.
Or square footage. I don't think, I don't know that people just definitively know what square footage of an acreage is or.
Where do you mean or square footage?
I'm just. See or square footage.
It's not in here, but I was just stating, should it be acreage or square footage? Just acreage?
I would say just acreage.
Okay.
Personally.
So it just, it didn't, it just sounded where the way it was. General, um.
Okay, I can reword number four.
Area and acres of the property shall be included.
On the sign.
On the sign.
Yes, thank you, I just saw that.
Area acreage of the property shall be included in the sign.
Uh, my only comment is, I wondered if we need to give like a maximum duration that it's allowed to be up after public hearings are done.
Yeah, it says seven days.
In here, yeah.
What?
Seven days after final approval from the board. From the Board of Trustees.
Oh, there it is.
Number, letter E, yeah, yeah.
I don't like these. I like it when Brian does them.
No, it's a great idea. But I think, just like, would people never read that they have to put a sign in the yard for variance? I'm glad to hear that you're gonna be stickler with that. It's not in, sorry, we're not gonna hear it.
I stopped seeing them for a while. It's like you drive around and you never see one.
So, so Amy, maybe you have a template, so just some, I have a red sign with blue lettering on it, not gonna see it. Not driving by at fifty miles an hour, so your template's probably gonna specify it needs a, a white background with visible, you know, because that's, that's gonna be an issue, a yellow sign with orange lettering on it.
Maybe it just needs to be, you know, township colors.
If she's gonna have a template, I'm just saying, make, make the sign readable from the road. Six foot's a good, good idea.
Color requirements. Oh, no, the colors, I missed.
Okay. I will do that.
Hunter's orange.
All right, so that's what it has to have on it. Is there anything that says you can't do anything but what that is? Like, they can't put a big Arby's logo or, right? A developer's logo?
I, I think we just have a standard.
I don't, I don't really.
Just asking. You know.
Brian, you got any thoughts on that? You seen anybody do?
I think you're already requiring them to put a heck of a lot on the sign. I don't know.
They would have room.
I mean, if it's a commercial business. I mean, if it's a commercial business, they're gonna get creative, they'll put a logo on it if they can, but if you wanna put in a prohibition on, you know, corporate logos or company logos.
It's only six feet wide, but it's eight inch lettering for the first line, and four inch for the other.
Right.
It's already tight.
Yeah, it's a lot to put on a sign.
Right.
I, and can I ask a question, just, this is the first time I'm seeing it.
I know, I'm sorry.
Okay, so the lead-in is, this applies to a development rezoning or special land use. So that's pretty much everything, regardless of public hearing or not. Most communities that use these signs do this when there's a formal required public hearing. So special land use, PUD, rezoning, but like, a straight site plan doesn't require public hearing and notice, they wouldn't typically do a sign. Sketch plan review, doesn't require public hearing notice, they wouldn't typically do the sign.
I, I agree, I have been asked to try to do it to, let's say, the ridge didn't require special notice. They might have only because of the special use.
Right, special use it would have required.
Yeah, but like the ridge wouldn't have required a public notice.
Okay.
When it went through, and that's the subdivision over there on Bauer Road. So I'm trying to figure out how to, how to make it requirement for a residential development, maybe that's the key? It's a residential development, instead of just plain development?
Okay.
Would that, would that be a little bit better?
I just wanted to make sure that I'm reading it right as to how you wanna apply this, however you guys wanna apply it, so.
No, I did not wanna do for every sketch plan, for every site plan.
So I would almost, you know, I would maybe exclude what you wanna exclude. You know, you can say for a residential development, comma rezoning, or special land use, but excluding sketch plan reviews? I mean, I don't know, I don't wanna make it too wordy, even though I'm good at that.
I am, just because I have to read the ordinance, and you know, just like you, we gotta enforce it, I'm good with just residential development, rezoning, and special use. And then the rest is excluded.
I don't know, I might, I might like to read through it a minute, but.
Okay, nope.
I don't wanna slow this train down either, so.
No, but I mean, the three items you got is a lot better than what we got now, so. So it's, you know, step in the right direction.
So I work on it with Brian prior township board approval.
Yeah, you'd always go back and modify it after a year or two.
You can, you can have one made up for a hundred and twenty-five bucks.
Right.
Get your template out there, give it to a sign company, and say, make, I don't care what you say on it, just let me see it, the layout of the sign. Picture's worth a thousand words.
I do, to, to piggyback that, this is the one community that does this the most that I work with. They actually just have, it's a little, it's gonna be more generic than what you're asking for here. And they have like four or five of them sitting in Township Hall. And then that way, it's pre-made, and you just hand them out, there might be a spot for like a sticker for a date of meeting or something, but like that, everything else is constant. It's basically, this property is subject to a public hearing at the planning commission, whatever.
Right.
So, I mean, if you generalize it a little more, you could almost just do that, and then just hand out the sign. Now, I don't know whether the township wants to do that, but, so anyway, I'll, I'll shut up now, I'm sorry, but yeah, if, if, I'm happy to look at it a little bit in more detail, if I can throw anything your way to help, I will.
Okay, thank you.
I like what you did. I, what you're asking, I think is similar to what I do with EBA signs, which actually doesn't give you any, you have to go hunting and searching for information on it.
They're this big.
I, I don't think that's gonna like scratch the itch that we're trying to, um, maybe address here, if I'm reading truthfully, correctly with our community. There's a lot more transparency and openness, I think sometimes signs like that kinda like don't really lend itself to that, kinda like begs more questions than answers.
Right. Okay.
What's next?
I'm, that's all I got.
Is that it for September?
This isn't to be posted, it's to be postponed, right, is it? Amy, you're postponing thirteen, September newing?
Yeah.
Okay, cause it says.
Well, that's what you're doing.
It said posted.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Whoever was there, it confused me.
Oh, postponed.
You have to request it, right?
Yes, may I please have?
So, are we looking for a motion to?
We need, we need a motion for both.
Moved as, moved to post.
Oh, that's right, sorry, yes, you need a call to the public.
At this time, I'd like to make a call to the public, if anyone would like to.
Thank you, Patty.
Seeing none, we'll bring it back up front and look for a motion.
Moves approved, staff's request for article thirteen Environmental Protection Regulations to be posted to the September eighth, two thousand twenty-five Planning Commission meeting.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, we move on to article thir- or, what is it, do we have to do twenty-one?
Yes.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
So we're approving this, right?
It's recommended.
Recommended, recommendation of zoning ordinance amendment to article twenty-one entitled Administrative Enforcement.
Was there?
Discussion, you want further discussion?
I'll support, but discussion was that upon, um, staff meeting with planner, right, wasn't that was going to be done?
Well, I was gonna add in, I was gonna do the color requirements, the sample map, sample of contact information, and re-work on residential development, residential and special use.
You gonna give Patty that list later? Okay, that's the motion.
I have a question. Could we use a QR code on these signs? And have it, allow someone to put it into their phone, go to our website, and find out what's going about, going on with that property? Or is that too far out there?
No, actually, our township manager had that idea. My concern is, I'm worried about traffic, people stopping on the side of the road, running up, they're, they're getting on somebody's property, they're trespassing to try to read that sign.
They're gonna stop and do that anyhow, if it's too slow.
Yeah, but we're asking for it with the QR code.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
So that, that was my concern.
Okay, never mind.
So we had a second?
We had, we had support.
With discussion to be added?
Yes.
What, what was the motion, I'm sorry?
To approve the, um, ordinance amendment to the article twenty-one entitled Administrative Enforcement with the changes that Amy has listed here.
Which is, add the color requirements, sample of the map, sample of contact information, and work with Brian on the residential development, rezoning, and special use wording.
And change art, and change forward, says area.
Oh yes, sorry, I do have that.
Area acres of the property shall be included.
Yeah, I have reworded.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion passes.
Staff report.
Staff report, talk to us.
Um, we did not get any new submittals for September, but we are having a meeting for article thirteen. Which I think is actually good.
And I have a September eleventh on my calendar, are we supposed to, still trying to do a joint meeting somewhere? Did I have, save that date for a reason? Maybe I just mishand- mismanaged my calendar.
Let me look.
September eleventh is the meeting for the, uh, what is it, the board of trustees has that, uh?
The plant, the planning contractor?
Oh, it's a September eighth meeting, I apologize.
That's, September eighth's our normal meeting.
Yes.
But I have September eleventh for some special meeting, I don't know why.
I do not have.
September eleventh is the meeting in here for the, uh, it's a, oh no, I'm sorry, I'm thinking it's the master planning training.
No, it's, that's the tenth.
That's on the tenth?
I think it's the tenth.
Okay.
I look at the website.
But that's the meeting, alright, so there's a training meeting that we're supposed to attend?
On the tenth?
Let me look, planning zoning workshop for everyone, that's the tenth.
Okay, I was off by a day.
The eleventh, I do not know.
Okay, well, I may, I may have put the, put the eleventh instead of the tenth, so.
Six thirty.
So there is an extra meeting?
Well, it's for planning and zoning for everyone workshop, it's for the public to come in.
Oh, okay, okay.
We're expected to.
To come to that and not come to that.
We put a stipulation that it, we had to have a minimum of, uh, X number of people on there.
Seventeen, and it's over that.
It's, yeah.
Yeah, I think we're over twenty.
Okay, yeah, right.
Yeah.
So we're expected to come to that?
Yeah, we're expected to.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
My end of history.
That is all I have for?
Alright, I'll look for approval of the June ninth minutes?
Oh boy.
Approved.
Wait, what?
Wow.
That was just the discussion that we had.
That's like pitching a shut-off.
Oh, but I did them. Way to go, Amy. Alright, can we just go now?
We still like you better, Pat.
I do too.
Alright, any member discussion?
We gotta do, wait a second, we had to do this first.
Eric, go first.
Um, we don't have a second, who seconded the minutes?
Second.
Yep.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, none, member discussion?
Uh, I guess I would point out, going back a few years ago to the master plan, one of the objectives and goals was to create attainable housing. But what I do see us doing is continuing, uh, to actually add costs to the prospect of developing in our community. So I know the tree ordinance is coming down the line, that is actually significant cost for developers. Um, so if that was as an example to be part of the, uh, one that we looked at tonight, I mean, you're talking about fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars added to their costs. Just so we are all aware of that. The sign's no big deal, if that's a drop to the bucket, it was good for transparency, but I guess I would, as we go through or relook at the master plan, that is, sticks out to me that we make decisions and choices like this, that in the moment feel like the right thing, and they might be. But we also have to ask the bigger question at times, like, does it prevent us from reaching other objectives and goals that we stated we wanted to go after? Like the attainable housing, which in this community is probably the biggest, in my opinion, one of the largest, um, issues at hand in Livingston County. And we are smack dab in the middle of that, so, I'm just throwing that out there as a thought. Every time we add a new thing to our ordinance, we do make it more challenging, it is more red tape. And I don't see us removing red tape in my, however long I've been doing this now here, over ten years. We've never actually really removed much, we've added quite a decent amount though.
That's, well, that's a, that's an interesting, that is a very good point, you know, because the residents, the ones that show up and participate in the government, are demanding more red tape.
Right, and, but also can't understand that on the flip side, like, why we only build houses that start at eight hundred thousand dollars.
Right, absolutely.
They, but they work hand in hand.
Absolutely.
And eventually where this leads thirty, forty, fifty years from now, is a place where there's a decent amount of people where unless you started living here twenty years ago, you're not going to be able to afford to live in the community that you work in.
Double edged sword.
It's a double edged sword, yeah, it's, it's, that trend line has shifted. And if we make statements in things like master plans that we have an objective and goal to create more attainable housing, but then systematically throughout our year, we add things to our ordinance, add red tape, add, make it more challenging to, and more expensive to develop, then we won't reach those objectives. And I'm not saying that's the wrong thing, I'm just asking us to maybe, maybe through this master plan process, just a- ask an honest question about that. Is that our goal? Is it a goal? Cause if so, we have to actually make intentional decisions to go after that, so.
Good point.
What is the survey?
What is it?
When?
We got the final, well, it's supposed to be the final draft, and we had a couple of changes that we wanted to make to it, so we're just waiting on that, to get back from them.
I have a couple of comments, um, driving down Main Street, which becomes Brighton Road in Genoa Township, so many people are out walking and running right now. Who cuts the grass and the asphalt cracks on those, on those pathways? It's like,
Where's it at?
On the pathways on Brighton Road in, in the township that go, I mean, there are walkers all the time, and there's like, there are chunks of grass coming up through the pavement.
Kills the grass, is what needs to happen, not cut it.
And, it, just a comment, but, but the, the roundabout at the Crooked Lake, uh, or at Coon Lake Road, and where the entrance to Pine, uh, Pinehurst is, that was mowed the other day, it looked beautiful, but the brick pavers were, which are known for having lots of, you know, stuff, those all have weeds and stuff growing over there.
Well, that's the road commission.
Yeah.
The pathway is something that would have, is a great thing for our trustee Bill to talk about at the board meeting. That's an additional cost.
What am I supposed to be talking about now, who's gonna maintain the?
Mowing the asphalt on the, on the Brighton Road pavement that everybody wants.
Mowing the asphalt.
Yes.
Well, roundup.
Roundup, roundup, roundup.
Well, no, but I mean, we just added, added to that asphalt path tonight.
Yes, yep. Um, and the last thing I just wanted to mention, I, we had a class on surveying, um, last, last week with Carol Grove, I don't know if any of you know her, she's really great with wetlands. She was saying that a letter from the Drain Commission a couple of years ago came talking about Lake Shamong and getting it out of the wetland, uh, out of the, uh,
Flood plain.
And she's working on that right now, so she thinks very positively that Lake Shamong will come out of the flood plain based on what she's doing. Yeah.
Well, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who wanna stay, stay.